October eighteen meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. We will move on. What choice of words? Design review applications, I can say. Package, we have design. Okay, so let's look at. Overdue designer applications, I can say. Through five. Items are handled, we review that. Issues will pull up. Any board have any questions? Starting five A to five F. Question. Will look to. Prove those items. So lots of info on the side. And again, exactly what ADR said.
Yeah.
Cases.
All. My issue is that the. I see the white lettering. We've agreed on that. Overall, the vinyl meets the square footage of the sign is allowed. We didn't see there was anything gaudy, but more importantly. I think this particular case. What exactly? I'm gonna. This is what I don't like. Just that they did give me. Put them all.
The pushback usually on. They advertise the building. Not particularly a thing you do, you know, complete home improvements. New additions, interior remodeling, side address caller email. That doesn't all need to go on.
Sorry. I'll argue with that. This. It's not like it's not, it doesn't. He's allowed to have. And that's why that's.
And the sign is. Understand why you wouldn't have the. Or you've got a giant window. Big business on one side and then all the. Things on the other.
Again, I think. I did. Some. That was a challenge. So the only reason for putting the logo. Define it.
Mrs. Comment, question, concern? Bad?
See the. On the.
Yeah.
Are they at the bottom?
There's two SARs.
It's number eight.
Okay.
It was item eight.
Yeah, it's there somewhere.
It's under information.
Again, I think you heard what Alex had said about ADR's comments regarding the advertising piece of it. Advertising the services rather than advertising the business. Any other comments from the board? Carol?
Well, it seems to me that with the name of the business kind of set back and smaller on the door. You don't. If you're driving by, you don't really see the name of the business.
No, you don't. You don't see the phone number. I mean, you don't see what they do underneath. I can't even read it on my packet here, whatever the red is underneath that. There's some redundancy. Whether you've got the space to use or not, I don't think it's being used well.
But again, a lot of this is hard to, it's hard to read because it's been, it's very small scale is what you're looking at.
Sure, well, I've got it blowing it up on the screen here. Again, I think the message was pretty clear from ADR. I mean, is there a way to, to put all the text down in the bottom of the both windows and have it in a much smaller font? Or something where it's not, I mean, that's the overwhelming thing when you look at those, those two side windows. It's all you see is the, is the, is the services that they offer, not the name of the, of the company and the phone number. It's buried.
And my, I guess my argument again is what, what makes that different from other examples that we see?
Well, I'm not looking, I care about other examples. If other examples were done in the city. We are trying to be consistent and that's the, that's the issue. So I mean, with the issue is, is, you know, advertising the name of the business and, and the logo and the phone number and not a myriad of services and listing the different services that are there. So feedback wise, I think ADR gave you exactly good feedback.
Yeah, and again, as always, I appreciate the feedback. My, 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 again, my issue is that that tiny logo you see on the door, we can't really scale that up much larger and put it on the window because the way it scales out, it's, it's just as tall as it is wide, right? It's a square.
But you can put, you can scale it three times the size and put it on the left hand side window or the right hand side.
And that's gonna put you over the square footage. I try that. That's, that's, that's the problem.
All right, where do we stand? Yep.
Is the recommendation?
Radiator, ADR is not.
That goes back to.
Yeah, ADR is not recommending that it be approved, so they want to see it again with the changes.
And does that create a hardship for the?
I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding. Again, there were so many ideas that went back and forth in that ADR meeting.
Well, let's, Alex, can you, can you tell us what ADR's recommendation?
I'm willing to, you know, I'm willing to remove the vinyl on the bottom of the windows. In fact, that was one comment that came out. We agreed with that.
Yep.
And then I can change the letters to, from the black with the white outline to just white.
Okay.
One of the concerns ADR had with this conversation is they felt like it started to be, be being designed during the meeting.
Yeah.
And then, and that's what I don't want to do here. Let's stop, have the applicant revise, resubmit with these recommendations and we'll review.
So taking off the vinyl on the bottom, taking off the vinyl on the bottom left and the bottom right and leaving the vinyl in the middle and the, and the logo in the middle. We okay with that? Suzanne?
Yeah, I, but I think one of the reasons why there was a criticism about it is when there have been signs in the past, whether they're hanging or not, is that people are looking for the business and not what you do.
Right.
And so we try to keep it simple. I think we even discourage telephone numbers.
Yeah, no, I.
So I think that, so I, I tend to agree with design review because it becomes very cluttered and you would actually walk right past the name of the business. Because there's so much going on, so with simplicity.
I told you.
So I think that's where they were coming.
This is a very low speed road though, and this, again, pictures can be deceiving. This is not as inset as you may think it may be by looking at the picture. We are driven by, you know, you can drive by, you can see that door.
So you're talking about Main Street?
In Penacook, yeah.
In Penacook, yeah.
Okay, other discussions? If not, I'd make a motion to approve the sign as submitted, removing the bottom left, bottom right vinyl and maybe doing what you said about the lettering and whether you rework the, the, the message that's up on those two lines on each of those, the middle to not be redundant. I don't know if they're redundant or not, but yes, what? What?
Are we closing the public hearing? Or not yet?
No, not yet. So David?
I guess based on your proposal then, are we deferring to a design review?
No.
No, we're gonna either prove it or not.
Yeah, prove it or not.
It's not going back then.
Carol?
Well, I guess I would like, I guess my question to you is, could just the name of the building without the hammer and the, the other part of the logo be put on at least one of the front windows so that the name of the business is more prominent? I mean, I drive, I live in Penacook, I drive Main Street on a regular basis and I mean, I don't look in at the door. I look at.
Well, hopefully you shouldn't be looking to the side when you're driving anyway.
Well.
Approaching the roundabout.
Especially if they're on the right.
If I'm at the stop sign coming out from Merrimack Street, which I frequently am, I would see, and which many people do, you would see the name if it was on the window, but it would be tough to see it on the door.
You don't see it in this view, but something that might help you with that is there's also a side window that has that logo on the side window.
Well, you wouldn't see that from coming out of Merrimack Street. You'd see it coming north.
You can see it clearly from the rotary though.
Okay. Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I'll go back to my motion. And again, I, I think the, hey, thanks, Matt. I, I think, I don't think it's a good use of space, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor the point. So my recommendation, or I'll make a motion to approve it with the vinyl being removed from the bottom left, the bottom right, and then again, reworking the text as the applicant said they would.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? Counsel Pierce?
I understand what you're doing and, and I, I think it's probably a good compromise. I am concerned that we're gonna put ADR out of business if we decide.
No, that was ADR's recommendation was to do that.
Well.
To remove those two.
It wasn't.
Weren't recommending approval, but that was one of the recommendations that they made to change it and make it better.
All right.
It's a good compromise, I think.
Yep.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Would you like me to change the letters to white instead of black with a white outline?
Yes.
Yes.
Make sure we, we got you as well.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Teresa for the record is opposed. Okay, that motion passes, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item in our agenda. Item seven A, we'll move to the site plans subdivisions and conditional use permit section of the agenda. Seven A, if we could read that into the record.
Granite Engineering LLC on behalf of fifteen Integra Drive requests an extension to a major site plan conditional approval amendment for fifteen Integra Drive in the industrial district. Essentially, they are, their approval expires and they're asking for an extension. Staff is in support and recommends that the extension be granted.
Okay, any further discussion from staff? Nothing, nothing really for the report, right? Would someone like to make a motion to grant the extension based on the report and the package that you've got here as your findings of fact?
Someone.
Second.
Motion's been made and roundly seconded. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that has been extended, that will move on. Item seven. I recuse myself for seven B. Just gonna handle the reins on this one if you could, if we could bring it into the record and let me know when I can come back.
Boys and Girls Clubs of Central New Hampshire request an amendment to an improved major site plan for construction of a new community, community center at seventy-six Community Drive to waive the requirement to place electrical utilities underground. So on the site plan, the utilities are underground, but when it got constructed, they were placed above ground. So they are, the poles are there, the wires are there, above ground, and they're requesting a waiver to allow that to be, to remain.
Comments from engineering? Any?
No.
No, okay.
Question?
Yes.
How was it approved again, Heather?
With the, with the utilities underground going under the road.
All right, I'm gonna open the, there's a public hearing on this?
Uh, correct.
Yeah, I'm gonna open a public hearing. Has anyone in the audience wished to speak to this item? Okay, same then, I'll close the public hearing and put the discussion.
So when I read this, if I understand it correctly, the utility, the service is going to be underground onsite? And this is just across the road to get to the site?
No, they're above ground. They're above ground, across the street and across to the site. And then.
Oh, okay.
They're above ground.
Okay, I misread that, thank you.
Yes.
So I always look at this as like a slippery slope because it's like, oh whoops. And so then we, I mean, like in, I mean, I don't know if it was intentional or it was a mistake, but it would, could be a big mistake and I don't know if this is something that we want to promote. It's like, I don't know, there was a reason why the utilities were underground. Is it important?
If, if I may, is there anyone in the audience from the applicant? Yeah, anybody? Okay, yes, Jeff?
I just, we've been running into this for what, a year and a half now where transformers are hard to get? And we've had time and time and time again where applicants are saying, we're getting delayed, we can't do it, we want to open, just let us do this. And I keep asking, why can't we have them set it up such that when the transformer comes in, it can be transferred back to the way their approval is? And this is a temporary condition only.
That's a good comment, yes, Carol?
Well. This is a residential neighborhood. If these lots had not been merged, all of those residences would have had their own utilities across the street. So this is actually making two less overhead crossings than would be the case if they remained residential lots. So personally, I don't have a problem with granting the waiver.
No, you're absolutely right. That neighborhood is full of overhead wires and it, there are at least two that ran to those, those houses that were there. This would be replacing one of them, so you're, you're minus one overhead, if my rudimentary math would be correct. But, but the bigger issue too, of course, is this was not the plan. And we had this issue last month with someone who deviated from the plan. And we held the developer, they do great work, the Boys and Girls Club do great work. What do we do as a planning board? Yes, Matt?
Mr. Eman says that in his letter that it was recently paved, repaved, is that correct? You would know, I think, counselor. So we're digging up new pavement?
Well, the intention was that it would go under, that it wouldn't be dug up, that it would go under.
Though like a horizontal.
Right.
Or underneath, okay.
But I think that is the reason why they didn't want to disrupt the road. And I would just remind the board that this is a city partnership. So I think as staff, we're kind of in favor of supporting it because it's, the city is a party in the application.
So why did we require it in the first place?
Well, it's not entirely a city project and it does, it is required to go through plan review and it's not under six seventy-four fifty-four. So it's not exempt from our requirements.
It's, it's the site of the new library. In Penacook, yeah.
No, I get that, I just, I always feel like when something happens, we're always in a place where we have to prove it because the alternative.
Okay.
So I mean, make them do it in the first place.
I don't think anyone thought they didn't.
They wouldn't do it.
Want to do it or wouldn't, you know, it wasn't the discussion point, let me put it that way.
So what's the, our prerogative, I entertain a motion?
Can we get to plant some more trees in lieu of?
That would be deviating from the plan.
Except they save so much money by doing it overhead than underground. Just saying.
Is that a motion?
No, I'm just throwing it out there.
All right.
I just have concerns about the precedent.
I do too.
I do too.
Is that, you know, it's, it's somebody set a slippery slope and I think that that's what we're on. Not major, but it's an issue. We approved it one way and like Matt mentioned, it's, you know, last month we got ourselves in a gum too over things being switched up on us.
Okay.
Did, sorry. No, you go. Did I understand that the wires could be jacked under the road rather than have a trench?
To be honest, I don't know the technical issues around whether it's feasible or not. I was just told that what, they went overhead and they couldn't, they, they didn't go underground. I, to be honest, I do not know if it's possible to put them underground or if there is some other technical reason why they did not do that.
You can do a lateral bore.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we typically expect them to do in these situations. I don't have, let's see, let's look at the, let's look at the request. Is it in the, in the request? Did we read that?
Yes.
Ask a question of the board, would it make a difference to people if it didn't tear up the pavement? Or if it did, would you prefer not?
I mean. We don't get paved all that often in Penacook. And I really.
We've done a lot of roads in Penacook this last year.
I know.
She wants it to stay.
I don't want to tear them up now that you've done them.
As the counselor that butts that ward.
So can I clarify a question that was asked earlier that actually in the narrative, it says that there are existing overhead wires on the one side of the street and they, they cross over in that neighborhood. I think you might have mentioned that, Carol. And then once they get over to the site, it says that they will be underground with, throughout the site.
Right.
Yes.
So it's just across the street?
So it's just across.
That's what I was asking.
These are not overhead wires attached to the building.
Correct.
So the need for boring, right, that's what I, the need for boring isn't there.
I mean, that's different because the way, the way it was discussed the first time, somebody said it went overhead all the way to the building. That's where my camera came from, the transformers there and they just didn't go under the street and they set a new pole, but it comes down off that pole and city right away and goes to transformer, then I'm fine with that.
That's the situation.
Okay, I thought it, the way it was kind of worded before was all the way to the building, that's what I have the issue with. I would entertain a motion to issue the waiver given that the lines onsite are underground.
Second.
Okay. Time to vote. Motion, we have it seconded, did you get that? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Two, two opposed. All right, thank you very much.
Let Rich know when you can come back in?
Let Rich know. Nah.
Ellie, can you go let Rich know? Thank you.
Yeah, would you get Rich?
Counsel Pierce did a nice job.
Thank you.
Should've just texted him.
Sad faces.
Would you like me to read some C into the?
Yes, please.
Sarah Steiner on behalf of Emerald Plaza LLC requests a conditional use permit to allow the use of a doggy daycare at two nineteen Fisherville Road in the General Commercial District. So this is a, this CFP is required because the, our zoning ordinance doesn't contemplate what we think of as a doggy daycare. It only has a kennel. So a kennel is allowed in this district with a conditional use permit. This is not actually a kennel, this is, you know, dogs indoors, it's kind of like a play location for them, my understanding. There's no outdoor space for them. It's just entirely indoors. And so we recommend it would be approved.
All right, is there any staff report? The applicant here? Everybody's here for this project. Kidding, kidding. How are you? So if you could state your name for the record?
Sarah Steiner.
And just give me a quick overview of what the kennel's gonna, excuse me, what the doggy daycare is going to be? Hours?
Yeah, sure, it's not really a doggy daycare, it's sort of a indoor, whoop, canine recreation center. So sort of like an indoor dog park.
Okay.
And hours are gonna be split hours, so it'll be morning from about ten to one and then.
Closer and speak into it, it's, I think you're, a couple of different microphones are picking up here.
That's good. So split, split hours?
Yeah, so morning about like ten to, ten to one, shut it down, tent eyes, open it back up for about. Yeah, so morning about like ten to, ten to one, uh, shut it down, hand ties, open it back up for about morning.
Okay. And no overnight?
No overnight, no boarding.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. Jeff?
So, I do have a question, where do the dogs go to the bathroom? Is there something inside the facility, or are people going to be, before they get out, they get out of their car, let the dog go on the lawn right outside the business, and then bring them inside?
Yeah, so we're going to put a designated area outside in the back of the business, um, for people to be specific, so before they come in or if they need to, so the body wouldn't go there.
Any member of the board have any questions or concerns? Remember the audience have any questions or concerns? Thank you for your testimony.
Did you sign in?
Yeah, if you could just sign in.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so in your packet, um, we have got two point two, which is grant the conditional use permit to allow the use of a doggy daycare at two seventeen Fisherville Road, subject to the following conditions, and that's outlining condition A. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, Carol?
I guess because it isn't really a doggy daycare, I would be happier if the motion specified what it is rather than what it isn't.
Well, I think that's what it is, isn't it?
No, it's not, it's not a doggy daycare.
Doggy gym.
That's the same as doggy daycare.
I would say so, yeah, you're leaving them for three or four hours, and then picking them up for three or four hours.
They're not leaving them.
Any, any, any recommended verbiage that you'd like on that, other than doggy daycare? Instead, the big thing is it's not a kennel, and not overnight, so it's daytime, daytime dog entertainment?
If I'm not mistaken, the owners are there with the dogs.
That's correct.
You don't, they're not leaving their dogs to be cared for, so that's the whole, that's the difference.
Indoor dog park?
That's what she has in her narrative, indoor dog recreation.
I was thinking indoor dog park makes sense, since it's similar to what an outdoor facility would be.
So, two point two, to grant the conditional use permit to allow for the use of an indoor dog park?
Yeah.
At two seventeen Fisherville Road, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlining condition A. Good with that? Someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Who made the motions?
Motion.
Suzanne made the motion, and, um, Carol seconded it. Sorry, I'm not doing a good job telling you who's and who. You haven't recognized voices yet, Krista? Okay, seven D, if we could read that into the record?
Jeff Burnier, on behalf of Donna Raymond, requests minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment, transfer approximately ten thousand square feet of land from their parcel to the city railroad right-of-way, in exchange for transferring approximately ten thousand square feet of land from the railroad right-of-way to their lot at two eleven Bog Road in the open space residential district.
All right, if we could get a quick staff update on this one?
Sure, it's a lot line adjustment, uh, between the city and the Ramones here. The applicant is requesting fifteen waivers. Staff is in support of them all, thirteen of them as they are, two of them conditionally. Uh, there is no proposed development or anything, it's essentially just a land swap as part of a settlement agreement.
Okay. Just saw Tim Burnier walk by, I don't know where he went. So just for the record, is this the most waivers you've ever had on an application?
For a lot line adjustment, it's not unusual.
That's all, I didn't want, I just wanted to ask, I've never seen fifteen waivers on an application before. Any questions for the applicant from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? Heather, any things we should be concerned about? I looked through it pretty good, I didn't see anything.
Did you open the public hearing?
Yeah, I did, I asked for, yeah, I opened the public hearing, and I asked for public input. Anybody have a question, concern? No? All right, so we'll close the public hearing, any other comments, questions, from concerns from the board? Counselor Pierce?
Uh, we discussed this on the, on the council
Yep.
As part of the rail trail, and, uh, fully supportive of it.
Yep, absolutely, I think it's a good swi, I think it's a good swap, all the way around. So, in your packets, we've got, um, we've got a couple of pieces here. Three point one is, uh, we're going to use this information that we've got here, uh, as our finding of fact to, uh, allow us to grant the following waivers, uh, which is to grant waivers as outlined in your packet in three point two. I'm not going to read them all into the record, uh, but we'll take them each individually. If we could do three point two, would someone like to make a motion to grant the waivers as outlined in your packet?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Suzanne, uh, seconded by Counselor Pierce, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, three point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment at two eleven Bog Road, uh, in city of Concord parcel thirty-two Z seventy-eight, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through seven, would someone like to make a motion, make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by David and seconded by Counselor Pierce, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you are all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to seven E in our agenda, if we could?
Hank Amstyn, on behalf of Michael Gaffar, requesting minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment at twelve Toronto Street in the neighborhood residential, uh, district.
Okay, can we get a quick staff update on this one?
Sure, this is another lot line adjustment. The applicant is seeking this adjustment to build a garage. He's received all the necessary zoning variances. And, uh, as part of the application, he's requesting two waivers, which staff is in support of. As the kind of garage fits, you know, with the zoning variances, fits right into kind of what this neighborhood is.
Okay.
So, um, we have need to determine the application complete?
Yep.
Staff recommends we do that.
Okay, so we've got a determination of completeness component, this is not a development of regional impact. Uh, and we will, uh, if someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, public hearing is open. Uh, any member of the audience have any questions, concerns, or comments about this application? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name's Michael Gaffar, I'm the applicant. And, um, the only thing that I would like to add, unless you have any questions about what this is all about, is, as, uh, as Alex said, it's to allow the construction of a garage, which, uh, and the lot line adjustment is between two properties that I own.
Yep.
Uh, the only other thing I would ask is that I would like to request a further waivers of three point five A and B. Uh, because I don't think that they're like, uh, Mr. Amstyn doesn't believe that this, uh, that the essence of the request is applicable to a small project as contemplated. This is, the total amount of this, uh, uh, lot line adjustment moves three hundred and twenty-four square feet from one lot to the other lot. So, I'd ask, in addition to the other waivers requested, I'd ask that you also waive three point five A and B.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? No, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, Heather, what does that do to, it's in the technical review comments?
Yep, so we can just add it to the waivers if you want to grant them.
Okay. Any questions or comments or concerns regarding that? No? Any member of the audi, any other member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? We'll close the public hearing, Jeff?
I just have one, there seems to be from the existing driveway, which is now going to be the garage, a walkway that actually crosses from across one property onto the other. Does, should that be addressed somehow now?
I don't know that I saw that. Alec, you know this proj, project, any?
There is an existing walk there, it could be a little interesting, whereas the applicant owns both properties, he can't convey an easement to himself?
But yet, if he sells the property, he can't?
It's, it's an odd conundrum. Um, there is some interesting language concerning the driveway, with that existing right-of-way, where it's written into the deed. But typically, when you own the same piece of property, you can't convey any type of easement or anything like that until that said sale, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
So if it's sold, it could be done at that point? Okay. Any other questions from the board? If not, we will, uh, oops. We will look to our packet here, and in your packets for, under four point two, uh, we'll use the information that we've got in our packet as our findings of fact. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the following waivers? And again, we'll be adding into that, um, is this where we're going, three point five? Three point five A and B, to grant the waivers as outlined in your packet, including three point five A and B? Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Suzanne, seconded by Counselor Pierce, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, four point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment at twelve Toronto and eleven Summit Street, uh, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through eight. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
May, a motion made by Counselor Pierce, seconded by Carol. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alec, thank you.
Okay, let's move on, item seven F in our agenda.
Ekman Engineering, on behalf of Continental Paving, requests major site plan approval and three conditional use permits for disturbance to wetland buffers, disturbance to the shoreline detection district buffer, and disturbance to the flood hazard district for the purpose of construction and relocation of a road and bridge across the Sioux Cook River to access property in Pembroke at three twenty Sheep Davis Road in the Gateway Performance District. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete and not a development, well, actually, it is development of regional impact. Uh, they were noticed, uh, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we've got a determination of completeness component, this is a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete? A development of regional impact, then open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Matt, uh, seconded by Carol, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, public hearing is open, is the applicant here? Come on up. Uh, let's get a quick staff update on this one, if we could?
Sure, just real quick, this is over at three twenty Sheep Davis Road, which is Continental's, um, lot. And there's a existing single-lane bridge crossing between Concord and Pembroke over the Sioux Cook River. And they are proposing to re, to adjust the roadway location and construct a new two-lane bridge. The applicant is seeking a, um, a lot of waivers, essentially, um, to not survey, to not provide information for the entire lot, and more so just the project area. It's kind of condensed in that waiver area, staff is in support of those waivers, um, other than one that was requested, which is just other tabulations, which is only required if we ask for it. And, uh, this application went before the Conservation Commission for all of the CUP, um, requests and impacts. And they recommend approval as submitted.
Welcome to the table, congratulations on getting an approval from the Conservation Commission without any, any contingents. Uh, if you could state your name for the record?
I'm David Ekman from Ekman Engineering.
I'm Rick Charbonneau from Continental Paving.
Great, tell us a little bit about this project, what you guys are doing out there.
Okay, um, basically, we're replacing an existing bridge that was built in the nineteen fifties. That one's quite a bit lower, this one we proposed to lift it up, so we're above the flood plain, like the hundred-year flood elevation by a foot at the lowest, it's sloped, so it's closer to two feet on one side, but one foot's the minimum at the, at the Concord city line, which is the middle of the river. You know, basically, it's going to be a two-lane bridge, but we actually reduced the impervious by doing that because a lot of, the cat try, it's a hall bridge between, for concrete and the gravel, from the gravel pit and stuff. So the trucks stack up on one side, so it was quite a lot wider with the gravel in the beginning. So we've narrowed it up to go straight on the bridge, and they can pass each other on the bridge. So that reduced the overall impervious. I was asked at the TRC meeting to, um, do a drainage study a little bit. The peak flow for the existing was around point nine CFS for a twenty-five-year storm. We, we knocked it down, not intentionally, but because it was less impervious, not even including like detention. We knocked it down about point four CFS, so it's ve, it's very little, it's a trickle of a flow. We have a fifteen-inch pipe that it goes through, and, um, I could put some plans up, but we have a water quality pond that treats it. And, um, we've improved it, and, and made it a pretty good situation.
Made it bigger and taller and improved it?
Well, taller, yeah, wider, we, we span the wetlands, no impact to the wetlands. We are in the shoreline protection area, obviously, it's two hundred and fifty feet, we do have the permit in place for that. Um, you know, we use piles, which are very minimal impacting. You drive the pile and put a small cap on top, rather than a big footing that's below the stream. You know, so we're, we're driving that, putting a cap, and putting a bridge on it that spans, you know, the water res, the resource, the water, the wetland area there. I think it's a pretty positive project, and that's
And you can't see this from the street, can you?
No, it's an internal
Down behind, okay.
It's on the line between Pembroke and, right on the town line, Pembroke, we already have the approved.
I drove by, and I like to drive by and look, and I, I can't, I couldn't find it either, I was like, oh, well.
There's a bridge right in the middle.
It's a bridge somewhere I don't want to look at, so. Um, okay, questions from the board? Jeff?
I just have one, are you required to follow stream crossing rules for your width of your bridge here, so is it?
Yeah, it's plenty, we're well beyond that, um.
The one point two?
We don't even have a, we don't have any wetland impact. And, um, so the, the bridge itself spans beyond the wetlands, there's a shelf like five to seven feet that was brought up in the Conservation Commission, on each side of, you know, dry land. In other words, we're beyond the stream bank, so there's plenty of room beyond the water. I do a lot of stream crossing rules too, this, this one's, it's, it's huge, it's a big bridge, it's, it's spanning everything, so.
Other questions? Suzanne?
Um, uh, is it possible to have the city's planting, uh, details on one of the sheets?
Absolutely, I would agree to do that, I have some planting details, but we can add those. We did go through the shoreline permit, where we have, we're planting trees and a bunch of stuff to, to keep the point score, and
Okay. Any concerns on the planting, Suzanne?
No.
Okay. Counselor Pierce?
Just a quick question, in reading this, I did not see anything where you had to seek approval from the Army Corps of Engineers, is that?
We're well, we're well above
That's it, or you don't have to?
Right, we're well above the floodway.
Okay.
And they would have picked it up as part of the permitting process, I just got one in Claremont that had Army Corps. So they look at all the stuff that goes in front of the state, the DES. They would have picked it up if they wanted it, and, again, we're above, the other bridge is down in the floodway, we're up above it, you know, we're well above it.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No, we close the public hearing, thank you very much for your testimony, you're all set. Okay.
Did you both sign in?
Yeah, if you could sign in, thank you, Jeff, keep people honest, if you could. Uh, okay, so in your packet, again, using the information that we've got here as our finding of fact, and materials that were submitted by the applicant, and the work that staff has done, um, would someone like to make a motion to grant the following waivers, the site plan regulations, uh, and those are outlined in your packet on six point two? And there's two points in there, uh, fifteen oh three twenty-three for existing conditions, tabulations, and then fifteen oh four twenty-eight, uh, site plan tabulations. Would someone like to make a motion to, uh, grant those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Is that it for waivers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot bundled in.
Oh, they're bundled into it, okay. Sorry, who made that motion? Suzanne, seconded by Carol, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, four point, uh, sorry, six point three is to grant the following conditional use permits, uh, which is outlining, uh, conditional use permit in accordance with section twenty-eight four three D of the zoning ordinance to allow for wetland buffer disturbance and construct a road or bridge across the Sioux Cook River. And then the second one is in accordance with twenty-eight three two E of the zoning ordinance to allow for the construction of a structure not designed for human occupancy. Placement, fill the placement of other encroachments in the flood hazard district. And then conditional use permit in accordance with section twenty-eight three three F of the zoning ordinance to allow for the construction of a road, bridge, and necessary drainage improvements adjacent to the surface waters in the shoreline protection district. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those following conditional use permits as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Suzanne, seconded by Carol, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, six point four is to grant minor site plan approval for the proposed relocated road and bridge crossing of the Sioux Cook River, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through six, and subsequent conditions one, two, and three. Would someone like to make a motion, yes?
May I recommend we add a seventh precedent condition?
Certainly.
That the city of Concord landscaping and planting details be added to the landscape?
Thank you for that, so, uh, those will be outlined in precedent conditions one through seven, with the inclusion of the, uh, city planting, uh, and subsequent conditions one, two, and three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor site plan approval as outlined?[1754.74]
housing, a duplex condominium neighborhood, a townhome neighborhood, and several restaurants, self-storage, and open park, open space park areas on property off Whitney Road and Monitor Way in the industrial district.
All right, I'll ask for a quick staff update, but I think it's going to be a little bit more involved. So let's get a staff update on this before we open it up.
Sure. We will, well, I will let them make their presentation. I'll just make clear to the board that preliminary design review is a non-binding application. It's a non-binding feedback, non-binding comment. So it's not a plan review. They are not bound by anything they present to us, and they are not bound by anything that we give to them. It's strictly for feedback to understand how the board and/or the community feels about this project.
Great. Welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record?
Kevin LaCast, New England Family Housing.
John Sokel from Hinckley Allen.
And Ahmed Robarge with Stan Tech Consulting.
Great. Well, welcome to the table. If you guys could tell us a little bit about this exciting project and give us an overview and see where we can go from there.
Sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to set up a.
Do you need assistance?
I'm not sure if I can get access to it, so.
This city of Concord, you know.
I did put my flash drive in here, so let's just.
Go to there and see if it's showing up.
It's not showing up at USB Drive B. I apologize for the delay.
No problem. Give us some visuals to look at.
It's not showing up at USB Drive B. I apologize for the delay.
No problem. Give us some visuals to look at.
While Ed works on bringing that up, I guess I'll just start. So like I said, I'm Kevin LaCast with New England Family Housing. I have two of my partners here with me tonight, Dean Navaroli with Williams and Reeves and Mike Dion with Metro Walls, as well as Ed Robarge from Stan Tech, John Sokel with Hinckley and Allen, and Scott Trench-Montane and Ben Hinchner from Montane Powers. So we appreciate you guys taking the opportunity to listen to our project tonight. As we know, New Hampshire is in a housing crisis, and that's why we're here. Merrimack County, for example, has a vacancy rate of point three percent. You know, that's thrown around a lot. What does that really mean? That's one in every 333 units being available for rent at any given time. Stable market is five percent, which would be one in 20. So the need for housing is there. We know that. And we're, you know, excited to present this project to really take a look at that. So, you know, for the last year and a half, we've been working with the city as well as other constituency groups to really get an idea of what's needed. We know that Concord Next is looking at changing the zoning, and we really tried to take this opportunity where we had such a large parcel to create something that's in line with where Concord wants to go, where the state wants to go, and, and put a need into this. You know, there's a lot of talk about what type of housing is needed out there. Some people say we need more affordable housing, more workforce housing. Some people say we need more product for sale. Our answer is we need all types of housing, and that's the only way that New Hampshire's going to get out of this housing crisis is by building all housing of all types. For example, if there's a family that's living in what would otherwise be an affordable unit now, and they want to buy a house, there's nothing for inventory on that side of, of the fence, so they're stuck in an affordable house. If there's more inventory in, in, you know, an upper class house or whatever, it would open up an affordable unit for somebody else. So to, you know, to solve the affordable housing crisis, it's going to take all types of housing. So we took this opportunity to really create a nice project, and within it, there's 946 units of housing right now that's planned. And that breaks down to the housing types of, of all different types. So we have 151 units of workforce housing. We have 223 units kind of set aside in a, in a more amenity-rich type of, of complex, as well as 245 townhomes in two distinct neighborhoods, one on the south side, which I'll get into a little bit more, and one on the north side, as well as kind of an urban center where we're kind of highlighting that live, work, play New Hampshire, where there's about 110,000 square feet of commercial retail space on the lower levels with another 327 units of market rate housing on the upper levels of those buildings, as well as a self-storage component to it. Now, one of the things with Concord Next that, you know, we kind of took to heart was that we didn't want to have these buildings in a sea of parking lot. You know, that's kind of been the mantra and the way that things have been built for so many years. We're really trying to make this a really walkable neighborhood where we're building, bringing buildings closer to the roadway, closer to green space, make it more walkable with parking, sufficient parking, but more in the rear or even under the buildings in a lot of cases. So, you know, some of the other highlights of this project is there's going to be several walking trails, about two miles worth of walking trails that kind of meander through the project itself, along the bank of the river, as well as river access, which currently does not exist. And the tax revenue that will be created is meaning to be north of six million in annual revenue once it's built out, with the creation of about 100 plus new jobs, and that would be not counting construction. That's just for operations once the, once the project is fully built. And 42% of the land will remain as green space. There's a, a buffer from the bluff of the, of the river's edge that we're not being built in. So, you know, we've really taken a lot of those things into consideration in the design of the project. So with that, I'll let Ed get into some more of the details of it.
Great. Well, thanks, Kevin, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. We're really excited to be here today to talk about this project and working on it for, oh, maybe a year and a half or so, but we're, we're quite pleased to be here tonight. So just from a bit of context, if, if you're looking at the plan sheet that's on the screen now, to the right is, is north. So this is just bordered by in the north of US Route Four or Hoyt Road, I-93 to the east or the bottom of the page, Sewell's Falls Road to the south or to the left side, and then the, and then the Merrimack River. I give you this context plan because it's, it's interesting how this sets in. Currently, as you understand, the property is all zoned industrial, so these uses aren't permitted. And really, the purpose of being here tonight is, as we advance, we understand that we would need zoning amendment or zoning change here to make this work. We wanted to visit the planning board to, to see, is this a project that, that you would embrace? Is this the type of development that you're looking for in moving forward? So we'll ask you a little later on, you know, really, we know that we're here for informational purposes only, but we're just trying to get some better input. The site is, is really divided into two parcels, 95 acre to the south, where you see most of the, the larger form of development, and then a, the single, the, the townhouse, we call it the North Forty property. It just dubbed that name and it, and it kind of stuck with us. To the north, that's a 42 acre parcel, so combined, it's a little, a little over about 135. Oh, perfect. Thank you. So the north and the south. We did first consider, you know, some of the uses, as Kevin suggested. It's zoned industrial and, and as with others over the course of the years, they looked at different options, and we just really thought, thinking back at this riverfront access, really a nice piece of green developable land, it really kind of measured up to be really kind of what we should be doing here. And as Kevin said, you know, we started talking, working with staff. We visited the development team several times. We've been following along the Concord Next initiatives and looking at some of the, the development options that Concord is looking at now, we did think that this really set a, a good foundation of what this future property could essentially look like. So as the site lays out in a little bit better detail, as I said, from, from north up in this, up in here is the 174 townhouse homes. We call the North Forty. Whitney Road, Whitney Road exists today, and it's the, the end of the existing piece of Whitney Road is right where my marker is right here, just before the curve. This is on a combination of public right of way and then on the wind waste property until it gets to the northerly property line of what was the formerly, the former northeast co-op, Resource Recovery Site. That's, that's bounded by this area in here. So that Whitney Road extension, as we'll call it along here, goes right through the spine of the site to Sewell's Falls Road here. Some of you might recall the Whitney Road Extension Project that was contemplated. I think we were talking about this back in the, in easily in the 80s. But that roadway was to look at extending along that easterly property line, right pinned down to the side, coming up with the, the shape of the parcel for the, the southern parcel, the 95 acre, and then run along the alignment that we're showing here through the Resource Recovery property. So when we looked at some of the design options, and, and we actually came here to, to the development team review meeting to, to look at some options, and we thought this site would be best if there was kind of a centralized boulevard, a multimodal corridor right through the, the middle of it, so that we could do that front-facing development. A lot of other development options had everything here and a sea of parking that was facing that main street. We thought a little bit differently, and that's where we, where we got here. So our buildings are forward-facing. We think that's really important. In the overall site here, from a, from a land development capacity standpoint, we're about 42% open space. So we're really only covering about 58, 58% of the land, and, and only about 32% is impervious. As I said, we've done some geotechnical studies. We, we're really excited about the fact that this is really a very clean, environmentally, it's, it's environmentally sensitive, but we really don't have a lot of environmental constraints on the 95 acre parcel, just some isolated wetlands throughout the course of the, the site. And then we find most of the wetland areas along this, along this low spot. This is generally the low spot between the two sites. Then, of course, Burnham Brook to the north and Hayward Brook to the south. Avoiding all of those areas really allows us to build what, what I would call a really comfortable open space development. The site also features, you know, well over five acres of open space and park areas, as well as a network, as, as Kevin said, a network of trails that meander throughout the course, the course of the entire parcel, making all of these neighborhoods connected. We spent a lot of time really looking at, you know, what are some of the design details that we thought would be important. And this is a perspective view along, I'm starting in the south and I'm moving north here. This is a, just a perspective view of, of along that village center commercial quarter. This is right near the center, the center of the development. It just shows, you know, the, the importance of really an urban village center and all the features that can, could, and, all, all the features that it can, it can include. Again, buildings uptight to, to the sidewalk, having active sidewalk areas, pedestrian areas, on-street parking. That's a little bit different. And, and we have that down, in downtown, but again, a little bit different here, trying to create that, that really tight urban vibe. This is a perspective view that's looking west toward the river, along that village center commercial quarter. We'll look at that in, in plan view in a little bit of detail in a second. This is just showing the activated pedestrian areas and how these gathering spaces. We heard a lot in some of the public comment meetings that we had where folks really wanted to have some, some opportunities for amenities at, at a little urban village like this. So this is trying to address that. We continue moving north a little bit. This is a perspective view heading north at the south driveway of the North Forty property. And again, that North Forty property is looking at a, you know, a generally dense townhouse community, but with a lot of feature. And this is just a, another similar view inside the development, but this is looking at that, that, that square park area that would be shared by all. And, and again, our focus here is to try to make this as open space, as, as walkable, livable, and, and have a place to also work. So that live, work, play model really shines through here. Along the way, we heard, as I said before in some of the meetings, this really came out of the, the PVA, the Pennacook Village Association, where they were, when, when we met in an outline, this was an opportunity of some space along the northern side of, of the, of the project, where we can integrate something like a dog park and, and place to gather. So we're just showing some opportunity here to create open public space. This is a really great area, and, and we've included some on-street parking along the quarter to really accommodate for folks. This also becomes kind of a trailhead of, of the circumstantial, the circumstantial trail network that's around the site. So this is really a great feature. Talked about this just a second ago, but this activated pedestrian phase space right here is really important, and it, and it gives a lot of option. You know, we, we are looking at about 120,000 square feet of retail with residential over in this little village or urban center. But we also are looking at, you know, a raised intersection table that really creates a space for the pedestrians and, and calms traffic. This section of the roadway is long and straight. We thought it was important to, to focus on that. And, and with, with raised medians and street trees along the side, we're really looking at the opportunity for some, some really innovative stormwater management here. Soil conditions are, are really great, and we're really excited to, to put, to, put a lot of that water that's in our development areas back into play. There's just a couple of slides I wanted to put on here that we're stressing, that we're stressing the importance of, again, open space and landscaping, putting our buildings along the front face, trying to calm the sea of pavement. We do need parking, but in this case, you know, we're really, we've really upped what our internal landscaping is to soften that heat effect of this project. So this is at the market rate apartment location, and again, we're upwards to 15 to 18% of internal landscaping in all of these projects. Again, a little bit better detail on the workforce housing neighborhood. It's unique that we have the opportunity to create some small neighborhoods. And again, internal landscaping at, at around the 15 to 18% number. The parking calculations are really just showing that, you know, parking is, is obviously always really important, and we're trying to meet those, we are, we are meeting those requirements. A little bit looking here, and we did get some, some comments really related to some of the treatments at our parking lots, which, which I think we can really take into account. Maybe some, some sort of screening, maybe some visual walls that separate that out a little bit better. But this is our urban center in a, in a, quite a focal point to the neighborhood. We'll talk a little bit right now about phasing of the project. We've had a lot of conversations of, you know, how is this project going to be built? And, and, and then, and then when would it be built? This overall phasing plan will help to start to look at that. So we're calling the project Phase One, this North Forty parcel that's circled here, the 174 townhouses. And the thought here, and I'll get into, I'll talk about the phasing, and then I'll get into the infrastructure investment that also follows here. But our Phase One would be to, to be able to start with the northern end and then work our way south. Phase Two would be that urban village center. That's the next piece that we would be building, and we would need to really tie in some, some roadway connections in order to balance the, the length of this overall Whitney Road extension. Phase Three, we're looking at bringing on board, and this is Phase Two, and Phase Three, we're generally thinking that they're concurrent. We'd be, we'd be bringing on board the workforce housing neighborhood, and that would trigger, you know, some connections to, to Sewell's Falls, and we'll talk about that, that road connection in just a second. Phase Four, and again, likely some concurrency with Phase Three, the townhouse community in the south. There's 71 townhouse homes here that would be for sale, and they would go on board then. Next phase is the, is the self-storage. We have, we're, we're featuring here an indoor self-storage climate-controlled building, like, kind of like a Bluebird building. You might have seen those, and some nominal exterior storage as well. That would come on last, I mean, that would come on fifth, and, and then last is the, is the market rate apartment. The reason why that market rate apartment, and Kevin can speak to that a little bit better, is just the, the rental and sales saturation gets to a certain point where you need to bring more, more units on. So overall, you know, our 24, 25 timeframe to, to initiate the project extends through about that 20, 28, 29 timeframe. From the roadway infrastructure piece, you know, our thought here is, you know, and we've been working with the city, we're aware of, of the CIP project that would look at, you know, creating some, either replacing or repairing the Burnham Brook culvert. This sense of the, this section of the project is obviously. This sense of the, this section of the project is obviously in the north, we don't control. So, you know, needing to partner with, with the city and city council on completing that piece of the roadway, we're working on now. We've had a number of conversations with, with Matt Walsh, the deputy city manager, and we'll continue to have those conversations with city council. Again, those conversations didn't really become real until we, we really wanted to come here first and talk to the planning board to get, you know, is this something that you want to see on this piece of property? But the idea here is, is if this piece was built and accepted by the city of Concord as public way, this would launch into our Phase One. We would want to build Phase One to tie in. That next phase, as I mentioned before, the urban village would follow along. You can see that I have a green segment of road, and I have a dashed section of green road. So we're thinking that if the Phase One was built, and access was to the north, to and from the north at Route Three, uh, Route Four, I'm sorry, when we bring on or start the next phasing of that work to even just start construction, we, we understand that we would need to really build this southern, southern connection. Instead of building the entire roadway at that time, we would build that section to cross Hayward Brook that would also carry utilities with it. And then we would modify the existing woods road, I would, I'll call it the woods road, it's where the water main is. We would bring that up to an acceptable standard to the fire department, and we've actually consulted with the fire department on some of their comments. So that would be really that's next phase of trying now to build that access component. Eventually, this roadway would connect and, and it would be a full throughway. But this would allow us to get Phase One online, would allow us now to get Phase Two and Phase Three online with road connections, and then we would build the next phases as they subsequently go out. You know, I know there's a lot to that, and part of that is a development agreement. We need to partner with the city for part of their accomplishments, part of this development's accomplishments. But I think together is, I think we can accomplish a really great project here. So as I said, we're really here just to get some input from the planning board. You know, we've worked hard with staff, we're trying to, trying to follow the, the things that are most important in, in the Concord next, which was, you know, building a livable, walkable community, you know, that features a, a multimodal corridor, boulevard, if we want to call that. That's a gathering place, that's a place for people to live and work and play. So with that, unless Kevin or, or, if we have any other comments, then I'm happy to answer any questions you might add.
I haven't heard multimodals since our two thousand twelve discussion of the Complete Streets project in Main Street, so congratulations for bringing that back, bringing that back up. Questions and comments from the board? Actually, I do have one question. So the, did you say the green dotted line on the phase plan was Woods Road?
It's, it's where the water main is now. There's an easement through that, and it's, it's gravel, it's a, it's an old gravel base. It was built to a standard back in the eighties, and, and, yeah, it, it would need to be upgraded, yes.
So is the intent at the very end of the project, is that a travelable, accessible road that you're going to be having traffic on?
Yeah, exactly. That, that frontage road, we kept this back frontage road where that would be. And, you know, not only do, will we service the backside of the project, but that's also where the, the water main would be, the city could maintain their water main.
Utilities, utilities right away as well.
More of a service road though, as opposed to, yeah.
Okay. Council Pierce.
Thank you. Great presentation. Couple of things to think about, you don't have to answer them, just some ideas that I went through that you probably already thought of. Electric charging stations throughout. Homeowners would have their own, I would assume, townhouses, but just public access to electric charging stations.
Yeah.
Bike paths throughout. I know you have the, the highways, but on-street place for bicycles to work. Bus route extensions, you know, to use public transportation for those that would like to. I'd like to hear more about the traffic flow ideas that you have. Again, not holding you to anything, but I worry about mountain road and Sewell's Falls and Exit Seventeen and all those things. And the townhouses, the north and south, do you see those maintenance as two separate HOAs? Or is it something individuals? Have you even thought about that, so?
Yeah, so on the HOAs, we, you know, I'm looking at this as one master condo development, the six components essentially being, you know, part of the master HOA, with then a separate HOA for the condo units within its, you know, so kind of like a, you know, a minor HOA.
Sub-association.
Sub-association, there you go. And then as far as the other points that you made, the electric charging stations, bike, those are definitely things that you, that we are definitely putting into the plan and have thought strongly about, and, and do want to put those in. We didn't mention them here tonight, but yeah, definitely taking that into account.
If I may, just two other quick questions. You gave your timeframes, but the city right now, as much we, as much as we are in the need of housing, have a inventory of approved two to three thousand units ready to go, and we understand the costs and, and supply chains and stuff like that. How are you going to make this work?
So that's a good question, and as I started the project off, the housing need in New Hampshire is greater than what there is currently approved, number one. Number two, we don't even know if all of those are going to go through or not. I mean, everything that comes to get approval doesn't necessarily get built.
Right.
But even if they all did, I mean, the statistic that I mentioned at the beginning, one out of every three hundred and thirty-three units is where we're at now. We need to get to one out of twenty. On top of that, as new units are built, new businesses also come in. I know, like Merchant's Way and the Rosio's, great project to the north of ours. When that's fully built out, it's going to create five hundred-plus jobs. Ours is going to have a hundred-plus jobs. You know, where we need right now with the amount of units covers the current demand. Now, once all these other jobs are in there, if you have five hundred people looking for places to live and there's only one out of every three hundred and thirty-three apartment units available for rent, the demand far exceeds everything that's currently approved in Concord, and then some.
If I may, maybe I, I misstated the question. How are you not going to be one of the folks with three thousand units out there that can't be built, that they are not being built yet, is what I'm saying? I understand the need. I think that's great. I think your, this project, if it goes through, is going to help fill that need, with or without the other ones.
Sure.
How are you going to make it work when others are sitting back? And they're not, there's nothing happening, very little is happening with these two to three thousand other units.
Sure, yeah. I mean, I can't speak to why the other projects aren't moving forward. I know that there are some projects moving forward. As far as our intentions, you know, they are the way that we spelled them out before. I mean, this is why we put the team together. The first step is to get through this approval process. We've already started talking with lenders and, and have financing, you know, ready to go. We've been talking to general contractors. I mean, we're proceeding with this project as if we are building it, and we're taking every step necessary to get to the point of building it. Now, and it does seem overwhelming when you say, okay, there's almost a thousand units here. Well, if you look at each one of these components, they don't necessarily compete with one another, because the people that are buying those condo units on the North Forty, there's a hundred and seventy-four of them. That's doable. That could be absorbed in this market today, fast. The people buying those are not the same people that are renting the apartment units in the urban center. It's a different buyer. It's a different group. They don't compete. And the same is said with the workforce housing units. The people that are, are going to be renting the workforce housing units are not necessarily going to be looking for a market-rate apartment unit with all the amenities that those offer, or a house for sale. The condos on the southern section, they're going to be a little bit higher end at a higher price point, something more at the top end of the scale. Again, it's not the same user for those seventy-one units as the other ones. Finally, that's why we're waiting on the market-rate apartment unit complex to be the last one to be built, because those will compete to some extent with the apartment units over the urban village. But when we get to that point, there's, you know, it's kind of the snowball effect. And once you get these things going and being built, the whole walkability and the attractiveness of what we're doing, as well as what Merchant's Way has done, is going to, you know, fulfill the completion out of that, those top ones. So we feel confident that we've got a project that can go to fruition.
Okay, thank you.
Ed, did I miss, what, the urban center, the commercial businesses that are in the urban center? Is it first-floor commercial and then upstairs apartments? Is that what you said? Any, anything you can share as far as not specifics, but what do you envision in those first-floor types of apartments? Or, excuse me, first-floor type commercial buildings?
Sure. Dean might even better answer that better than me. He's kind of been working that area of it. But it'll be a mix of restaurants, a childcare facility, maybe some small medical. You know, typically users between one thousand and ten thousand square foot of space. You know, so we're still programming those out. We have some ideas of, of some of the specifics that we would like to attract to, to it, but we're going to kind of master plan where we want the different commercial aspects of it. You know, we did put a couple of areas in there for food trucks as well to have some, you know, seasonal type of maybe transitional services out there and so forth.
So enough for somebody to live there and, and not have a want or need to, to kind of go anywhere else if they didn't have to? I mean, you could get what you needed. You could have a bank. You could have a barber shop or a hairdresser or whatever.
Exactly.
Little, small.
Service-type retail elements.
Yeah.
And some of them could be unique, you know, and be, be, kind of define the character of the village, yeah.
As well as some, you know, some shareable workspace as well. So, you know, I, I, again, a big attraction of the live-work-play or walkable neighborhood is so people can not necessarily work from home, but don't have to travel far in a car to get to another business. But, you know, a, a shareable office space is part of the program.
Standing in the center of the urban center, looking towards the river, how, how deep down is the river from, from that? As far as an ang, I mean, can I see the river? Is it down over the bluff? Are you connecting to the river at all, or is that just at the front?
There's, there's one.
The very south end is a connection.
Yeah, the, right, you know, it, with the urban center right here, that closet space that you saw before, I mean, there, right at the bluff here is about a fifty-five to sixty-foot drop.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it, it, it would be very difficult to get. We found a way that we could meander down and have river access down here that, that would be possible.
Yeah.
We'd struggle with making it an ADA compliant route, but perhaps there's a way to, to get to a certain point where just above the bluff with a lookout.
What's, what's in that space now? So it's just forested land? It's just raw natural land, right?
It's raw natural land.
So is it a hard bluff? I mean, could you, could you make that into a park area? Could you make that into, you know, picnic tables and? I'm just thinking of the riverfront area over by like, the Everett Arena, except it's up fifty feet. So you've got cleared to the, you know, the trees are up there, and you've got all the trees, but you don't have the undergrowth, and you've got areas that you could walk to the bluff.
It's a great example, because that's not too, I mean, this is, some of these sections are a little sparse. It's tree-covered, but there's also gapping between the trees. And that's why we're showing the meandering trail through here. We, we find, and there's this section right in here, there's actually a trail that's already defined right here. This is a great spot that has nice view, because again, it's a little bit less, less dense on existing tree line. We don't have to remove any trees. This would make for a nice place to create some spaces like that.
And then down at the very south tip, it's fairly flat. It's not as, it's not as much of a drop-down, isn't it?
Yeah, we're showing a little kayak launch right in here. This, this is very, very walkable right here, and it would be ADA compliant. You could, it's, it's much flatter when you get out, you know, right around, I'd say, this part of the, of the plant, the, the grade really starts to change, and it's really at grade along the waterline.
I mean, you know, the Pennacook Riverfront Park that we're completing is, is now, I mean, anything like that, it seems like there's just a natural draw to get people to the water's edge. Whether you're getting them all the way down to the river's edge or not, at least seeing it, sitting by it, whatever.
I think that that's really what drove the whole decision process of, you know, this Merrimack River is a great resource. There's not a lot of opportunities in Concord on the Merrimack River. This is one where, you know, we really need to have good river access. Not to say that, you know, we want to get into the bluff, because, you know, we just need to protect that. It is a live sand bluff, put it that way. But I think all the features that we're talking about right now really bring the river back to, to the, to the people as a great resource that it is.
The river's really fast right there.
It is, right around, going to that corner, it goes around quick.
Yeah.
Matt.
Thank you for coming tonight and presenting this. We definitely do need the housing. Statistics, I think you cited, were statewide statistics. So just to be clear on that, Concord still has a housing crisis, but, you know, those were statewide. This is a very desirable development. I think I applaud you for having the different types of housing living together in the same neighborhood. I think that is much needed in the city of Concord, so I think that's wonderful. I live on Mountain Road.
Yeah.
It's four miles from the circle to Hoyt Road. We sometimes refer to Mountain Road as the bypass to Interstate Ninety-three from Exit Seventeen, Exit Eighteen to Exit maybe Thirteen, even south of that. There are days I can't get out of my driveway. You can't get off of Shaker Road. You can't get to the heights because the traffic is so bad on a holiday weekend. I think three of us on the board would be directly impacted by this. I'm not saying not my backyard. I'm saying build it. I think it's fantastic. But I'm saying that the people on Mountain Road that I've talked to, and I've talked to many of them, don't know what their neighborhood is going to become. We're talking about a rural area of Concord that dumps into a suburban area of Concord that is a thirty mile per hour roadway. So that's a very residential roadway. So go forty quickly to thirty-five, down a hill to thirty. You'd be hard-pressed to find that, and so you're going to hear a lot of testimony from the folks on Mountain Road, probably the folks on Hoyt Road, in some of those neighborhoods that are off of Hoyt Road and off of Mountain Road, about the quality of life. And I hope they, they do come out and support the project. But there has to be, it's also a state road, so there has to be a discussion about the use of Ninety-three versus Mountain Road. Not your problem about maybe an additional on-ramp or off-ramp at Sewell's Falls. But I think that that's going to have to be a larger discussion as we develop this area of the city that is incredibly rural. This is a great spot for this development. It's just what it's attached to that presents the problems. So thinking realistically and maybe a little creatively about how we preserve the residential nature of Mountain Road, especially south of the Country Club.
So?
I'm just going to speak to that for one second, having lived off Mountain Road for twenty-seven years. The traffic study's going to be important, and a lot of thought is going to be given to traffic. There's no, there's no doubt about it. This is very complimentary to the Rosio's project and the investment that the city has made up off of Exit Seventeen. And it'll be interesting to see what traffic experts think about how people from there would, how they would travel to go downtown.
Yeah, who knows?
Who knows? I mean, I don't know if I'd get on Mountain Road or not. I don't know if I'd take a right on Sewell's Falls Road and go down through Pennacook. I don't know if I'd drive up to Exit Seventeen and drive down Ninety-three. I, I, I don't know. I don't know what, what you would do, Matt. But I mean, yeah, it's, we know traffic is an issue. We understand people on Mountain Road would have concerns, same as Sewell's Falls roads, but that, that will definitely be front and center of what we're doing as we move forward.
Sure.
You know, and I know Ed can speak to that as well, but right now, there is just Mountain Road and there's Ninety-three. Well, we're adding a whole 'nother third corridor that does not even exist today, which could alleviate some traffic from Mountain Road. I mean, Ed, obviously, I'm not a traffic engineer, but we're definitely taking that into account.
If I just may, before you answer that, Matt brings up a great point, because the same thing happens on Fisherville Road.
Exactly.
Because when you take a right coming out of here and you go down Sewell's Falls to Abbott, you're going to come out on Fisherville.
Right.
And it's, it's a mess today.
We got Heather here quick.
I, I just wanted to let you all know that there were some significant traffic studies, a lot of, done for the, excuse me, for the, the Rosio's project. And as part of that, you know, when we were trying to put together CIP and look at the future Whitney Road and construct all these different, you know, deals or partnerships and figure out what was what, this corridor was assumed to be built out. It wasn't assumed to be simply industrial use with minimal traffic. So there's already a base of studies that are going to obviously have to be redone with these folks and their specific proposal. But there's already a base of, of data that was assumed to be this type of density when those, when that construction happened and when those studies occurred, just an FYI.
I got stopped on Main Street this afternoon, and someone asked me, can you make it one way, all the way up to Exit Seventeen? And I said, I'll ask the question. I said, but that's all I'm going to. I said, but that's all I'm gonna do is ask the question, so.
Be creative.
I, I just, that's all I say is I'm, I'm just a culvert, a conduit for your question. I don't wanna, I'm just saying, that's what I was asked.
Comment noted.
Comment noted, so the note, it's on the record. I saw another hand, Suzanne.
Um, so I agree with Matt for, um, most of what he said. I know that when they were doing the repairs on Sewell's Falls Bridge, that was like the best thing that ever happened to East Concord.
Best two years of my life, I'm not.
Um, and so it really brought to light the amount of traffic. People will not go to Exit Seventeen. They won't go north to Exit Seventeen to go south.
Yeah.
I wondered who would be responsible for doing like a half interchange at Sewell's Falls, which would allow people to get off of Mountain Road. So it's like, you know, I think they have one kind of in Hopkinton where you can get on and off once and that's it. It's not a four-way interchange.
Right.
Which I think could solve a lot of problems. But I think that is critical, because we also have a lovely, um, roundabout that works perfectly. And if you add another nine hundred people down the road at different times, that could change it dramatically. So I think that that's a major concern for anybody who lives on the east side.
We're in Ward Ten or.
I was gonna say, east or west side, I mean, to anybody.
Especially for Fisherville Road, too.
It's not just the east.
I wonder why you would put the, um, storage unit right at the entrance? I think that I would, I would suggest you put it by the Concord Monitor, because that's kind of like prime property and if you're kind of like driving into somewhat that's more industrial and not attractive, because I've never seen an attract, I've seen attractive parking garages, but not storage units. So I would look at that. I'm a little concerned about the, um, the idea of having the main street is great, except if you're crossing the street, you not only have to cross over the street, but the, um, boulevard and it becomes a little more cumbersome. I wonder if you couldn't leave some of those open spaces as just open spaces and not put a lot of walkways in it, because you're kind of taking up open space by having just walkways that might never be used. The, I don't think the drive-through restaurant really makes a lot of sense when, um, there's access for that probably at, um, up the street there. But it just seems like that could be a problem for you with cars backing up, wanting to go through, whatever it is. And I'm wondering if you couldn't do your main street. It's so symmetrical and it's so the same that maybe there's a way to kind of be a little more creative where you've got more open space in front for dining or whatever. And mix it up a little, um, because there's still a ton of parking. I would think that your leasing building could be part of that commercial strip. And I would maximize that, you know, rather than have spotted buildings all over the property.
Which building? I didn't hear the first.
There's one that's for leasing. It's just a little building sitting by itself. It says, uh, Visitor Leasing Office Club.
Okay, I, got you, got you, yeah, got you.
It just seems kind of random. And it, it would be amazing if you actually planted all those trees. We'll see what, if that happens. But, you know, I mean, conceptually, there's a lot going on, but there's still a lot of parking. And it's all kind of clustered. So I would think that you might be able to arrange some of those spaces so they're even more spread out. Like there's a big huge parcel next to the monitor that hasn't been really maximized since it's right by the monitor. But, um, I am like Matt concerned about the access to Mountain Road, because right now there are a lot of people who bike there. There's a sidewalk that only goes up to the Country Club, I think. And it's actually very dangerous.
Yeah, it is.
And I can't even imagine what would happen if all these people decided to go. They're not gonna go on the highway. They're gonna go down Mountain Road into Roundabout and get on ninety, um, ninety-three. Because I remember even with the, when the monitor was putting their building there, they said, oh, the monitor, we're gonna tell them the, the trucks can't go up Mountain Road. The big paper trucks get off at Exit Sixteen and go up to the Concord Monitor. They don't go to Exit Seventeen and drive back down. So I think that's gonna be a big concern for the community.
I think that standalone restaurant's probably gonna be a Starbucks. It's about three quarters of a mile from the other ones.
Oh, yeah. Are you sure? I thought there's one in that Merchant's Way.
Anecdotally, on the, on the, um, on the self-storage, I don't know that it belongs at the other end of the development, but maybe on the existing end of the development that it's on, but on the, on the highway side. If you stretched it out long, along the highway side and then flattened out the development on the, on the road. So again, more, more residential along the road, kind of use the, use the, um, self-storage as a buffer against the highway and then had more of the, of the apartments up near, or condos up near the front of the road. You know, you, you, you got units now that are gonna be looking right out onto the highway, although they're probably gonna look over the top of a, of a self-storage building anyways, so. Good? Let me get Jeff first, Jeff next.
Thank you. So I, again, I commend you as well. I think this is a great idea to, to mixed uses. As others, I am the traffic engineer in the room, so I will tell you, I have concerns with the connection. You know, I see a lot of people come up Loud Road, I mean, up Mountain Road and go across Sewell Falls and follow them all the way into Pennacook, instead of cutting off to the other side of the river, going up to Exit Seventeen and back. So I think that is going to be your probably biggest uphill battle. The mix of the uses, I think is great. One thing, and maybe I misunderstood, but when I was looking through some of your parking numbers, I saw required mounts and then I saw proposed that were many times quite a bit greater than the required. I would say, I would look more at your parking generation. I would look more at the fact that your retail buildings won't necessarily be open all hours of the night. So maybe there's a way to have more shared parking where during the day they're used by the residential when a lot of those people are out at work and they're coming back. So maybe we can reduce the parking even more, because I don't want to see another situation where we end up with a parking lot like the mall, like Walmart, where three quarters of the parking lot, even during the Christmas season, is empty. You know, and it just, I don't want that to happen here and that be the first impression people have. Couple of things to consider, you talk multimodal. Maybe we can consider going beyond this, the absolute minimum five-foot bike lane everywhere. Give it a little bit more space, maybe even consider buffered bike lanes. Once you get by that center, that's a nice straight shot in both directions for vehicle speeds. And there's no real potential for traffic calming that you've got shown as of date. Another thing is, um, yes, I agree, Councilperson, buses. But I'd like to see an actual bus pull over with shelters, so that these people actually have someplace to wait. No one is gonna want to wait for a bus for a while out in the rain. And having an actual pull-off will get them out of the roadway, so cars can continue to go by without having to swerve into the other lane and, and become a danger.
So can I ask on the, on the bus line? So I had looked at buses as well. Do buses come to Merchant's Way now? Do you know, they don't? Okay. So what I had seen was there's a, a little gap in between the urban center and the market rate, the market rate ABC buildings there, the blue ones that are down at the south end. There's a fairly good amount of space in between there. And I was thinking that would be a great spot to have a, a pull-off for a bus, a bus stop, if it was gonna be.
Or even Ubers, let's, let's use that whole area as a ride share area.
Market rate apartments, that's where probably you're gonna get the bus traffic and the urban center, you're gonna get the bus traffic, so.
Just a couple more if I could. So another thing is if we really want to encourage people to use bikes, let's look at indoor, secure bike storage. Because if you just put three or four little outdoor ones, people aren't gonna leave their bike out there overnight. But if you actually have space or can provide space in these buildings, you're gonna be more apt to get people who actually will use their bike as the mode of travel. You know, with, with what Chairman Woodfinn said, let's look, make designated areas for ride share. You know, instead of just, oh, they pull up to the curb anywhere they want to pull or they pull behind parking spaces, maybe there can be designated spaces that have some sort of numbering or lettering system or whatever, so you, when you're asking for an Uber or Lyft or whatever, there's an area you go to. With that, I mean, I'll be interested to see the rest of it as you come forward. But like I say, the traffic, if you can reduce parking by some sort of miraculous amount or go to the absolute bare minimum of what the city's regs are, or even maybe ask for a waiver for less, this might be one that, you know, we would seriously consider. Thank you.
And we are seeing more indoor. I know the Flatley folks on the Employment Security Building are doing some indoor bike, bike storage and some secure storage areas for the bikes. They're expensive and you don't want to have them sitting outside, so. I see, David.
Just a quick comment on your boulevard concept down the middle. Have you considered maybe a planted space between the north and the southbound traffic lanes that would separate and also control speeds? Especially where he mentioned, uh, as you get in the north section of that, you got a clear straight shot and no way to really control it. And I guess I'm really talking about the flavor of a boulevard. And generally, oftentimes you'll see, you know, and it's much larger than I expect in this kind of a project, but Commonwealth Avenue, you know, the north and the southbound in, in Boston has that green space between them. It doesn't have to be wide, but a, a planted separation. You know, and then people actually trying to cross the road, they get to the midpoint and they're safe, you know, kind of thing, as opposed to traffic going both ways with nothing other than I don't want to see those concrete barriers separating the lanes. Ugly, ugly.
Agree.
So maybe some sort of a concept of a boulevard and a green space separating the north and southbound lanes.
Perfect example is Tuscan. Tuscan Village has Roundabout, Roundabout, Roundabout with Grass Street Medians. I'm not saying you're going as big as Tuscan, but that seems to be the one that people visualize when they think of this type of mixed-use residential type.
You're, you're absolutely right and, and, you know, we, um, we have toward it, we've looked at that. We think they've done a great job. We're trying to go a step beyond that and, and make things even better. The comments that everybody's making is great and we'll definitely bring that back. I mean, that's kind of what got us to this point, is the last year and a half. But, um, some very good comments that we had thought of some of and some we haven't, so it's great.
This detail that I brought back up shows that we do have a divided roadway right in the center core of the village. So there's a, there's a, there's a landscaped panel island that separates north and south.
Okay.
We got our bike lanes in there, they're not protected. But we were looking at an option, instead of having them along the roadway, is to have them protected along, in front of the parking, uh, along the sidewalk. And that's another option that would fit into the same realm. The two intersections, this intersection right here, it's not roadway intersection, but this is a tabled intersection, really to, to prioritize pedestrians crossing here. This is a very active pedestrian area, so we're, we're thinking that this will serve as a traffic calming tool. Also, just downstation from this, where the, the main crosswalk between the workforce housing neighborhood and the market rate of hu, apartment housing, um, that's also raised. So again, two, we try to create two areas that, yeah, that will bring awareness and, and slow traffic down along that straightaway to, to deal with some of those traffic calming issues.
If, if I'm not mistaken, I think we got a lot of negative comments from the biking community when we were doing Main Street, that they didn't want the bike path on the inside lane for people coming across into the bike lane or, you know, whatever. But I, I, I did, I do remember that, that I thought that was a great idea and it got shot down pretty quickly by the biking community, that they'd rather be out in the street and, and, and have it unprotected than have a protected corridor in the middle. If, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what I remember.
You recall correctly, yes.
Yeah, okay.
You do.
Did I see your hand, Carol?
Yes. I would echo the accolades that have preceded me, um, in terms of, of the concept. And I know you have this mo, multimodal vision within your development. And I guess my question, and I don't know if you can even answer this, is but would that pedestrian bike access be able to extend down to Merchant's Way? Because, I mean, I've been looking at, at the maps and even wondering if there's a way to have a bike path that would get from this development to Hannaford, so that you could get to that develop, commercial development without having to get in a car. Another concern that I have is where the north forty is. That's a pretty tight bend in the river. I frequently walk down through the fields, so, so I get to see the, um, it's, at that point, it's the south bank of the river, um, opposite the fields, but I don't really see up in there. And I don't know how actively it's eroding at this point. But, um, given what's going on with precipitation, I think it's important to look beyond what the bluff looks like today and how the river could change. I mean, if, if you look on the north side there, you see old river channels that are now colds. And the river is going to move over time. So kind of keeping that in mind as you figure out where to put roads and things would be important. And I guess the other thing I'm wondering is, would it be possible at, at some point before you get to a final plan to come before us, would it be possible just to do a site visit that the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission just kind of get us all out there to see it on the ground and kind of brainstorm together, so.
Great idea.
Yeah, love that idea.
So Carol brought up a good point. What is the connectivity to Merchant's Way now other than the road? Do you have anything planned for that? Or is it just biking up or walking up the road?
The old Whitney Road was built to an old standard, a forty-foot wide curb-to-curb roadway. And, and what we're showing here is the new city standard, which is a, is basically a thirty-foot. So we have thirty feet with two bike lanes that are on our section right now. So moving north, there's plenty of width within the existing curb, where you could actually shrink it if you wanted to. You know, the, the, the previous idea were, were two twelve-foot lanes and two eight-foot shoulders. That's what the design standard that the city had a number of years ago. And that's what Whitney Road was built to. So I do think there are no sidewalks that I'm aware of. There's no centralized bike lanes within that section. I think that would be something that, particularly if, if the city is looking at that first section of improvement, the city could take that initiative to get it up to that point. And then maybe there, maybe there is some sort of way to look further within the, within the footprint of the existing curb to, to add those features that you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, that's, Merchant's Way is gonna be the go-to for these families, for grocery, for liquor, for Starbucks.
Access to the highway.
To have that connected, I, I agree.
Were you, were you suggesting something separate and different than the road or tied into the road?
Well, I mean, that's the easiest thing to do, but I, I like the idea of a path that could be, uh, you could ride a bike or walk on to get there too. But you have some issues with who owns the properties up there, right? I get that, so. The road is easier.
Councilperson.
A quick question. Would you have to cross both Burnham and Hayward Brook?
With a path?
With a path or a bridge or a culvert to get from here to Market Basket, Exit Seventeen?
Yeah, you would, yeah. You would have to.
There's two crosses.
From the north, yeah. Burnham Brook is in the north, Hayward is in the south. The road, a continuous roadway, always contemplated crossing those two brukes. There's a culvert now at Burnham, there isn't a culvert at Hayward.
You couldn't go from the Wood Road there, the, the, the road that is up along the highway all the way up to Merchant's Way without crossing the bridge? Could, yeah, you could.
You could now, yeah. You could walk the gravel roadway where the water main root is, yeah. You could, you can, you can do that today.
Except for over Hayward, there's nothing over Hayward, it ends there.
But from the, from the center, from the, um, in theory of the center of your development,
Oh, yes.
from the center, you go towards the highway and you walk up the, or, or you have a gravel path or you have a, a bike path or whatever you might have. Jeff?
I, I just have one question, because I might have missed it when you were talking phasing. So you're gonna build the north forty. That road's gonna dead-end. So is that Woods Road gonna be built out for emergency access as part of that? Or, because I'm just envisioning if something happens on Whitney Road, this whole neighborhood is now cut off from emergency services. So is there any consideration of building that, at least for fire department, under Phase One?
I think you have to, yeah.
One, I'll put this back up here. This is that small segment of roadway where, again, the Burnham Brook is right here. So if, if this were built to our property line, what we were proposing in Phase One So if this were built to our property line, what we were proposing in phase one was to build this out. Essentially, this would become the first initial private driveway. It's essentially a private driveway to this neighborhood. This would be that extension, you know, you have that thousand foot rule. But you know, that's, when we talked to the fire department. Because we have these two driveways in here that would have some, at least there was a two way access into that neighborhood. You're right. If something happens here or even just upstation, then yeah, the incinerator, wind waste property, Boyce Highlands. There's a lot of folks that are in trouble on that existing road today. We would then propose in our next phase is to invest in the Hayward Brook crossing and then upgrade this. So that we then would be building this with emergency access at a two way situation.
So the fire department has no problems with that road being twenty-five hundred feet from Route Four to a dead end?
I think, I mean, I.
I know you're calling it a private drive from where the city ends, but let's be honest with you. It's a road and you have two driveways off in all consideration for emergency access purposes. I would be highly concerned, even if there's a way to upgrade the road just for emergency services. I could just see if something happens on Whitney Road. This entire neighborhood could be cut off.
But there's no, there's no access without building the Hayward Bridge.
Understood.
Yeah. I don't want to speak to the fire department. I mean, I would encourage staff to talk to the fire department. I mean, because I did meet, we talked about that. We thought that that was a reasonable phase one approach. But yeah, no, I hear what you're saying.
So we've actually talked, we've actually talked about this pretty extensively. It is, excuse me, I apologize. So it's staff's expectation that that would be part of their phase one, that that, and I think it says it right in the staff report. That as part of phase one, that Woods Road would be brought up to an emergency service level of completion. I mean, it's been a question. I've been wondering, how are they going to do this and cross Hayward Brook as part of their phase one? But it is our expectation that you will be able to, for those forty units, before they get their CO, get through there as an emergency access all the way down to Hayward Brook and through to Sewell's Falls.
And I would caution that that is not used as a construction access. So we just suddenly don't get a ton of dump trucks on Mountain Road and Sewell's Falls and everything else.
There is an assumption that it may be used for that as well. So I mean, that's for later conversations, I guess, to relook at that. But it is the staff's expectation that there would be emergency access all the way to Sewell's Falls Road as part of that first phase. So I don't know if that was not made clear in earlier conversations, but that was the city's understanding. And I think that's right in the staff report, that that's what the expectation would be. Because you're absolutely right, that it's a dead end from Hoyt Road. And so we don't want to increase that situation. We don't want to increase the noncompliance of that situation.
Just a clarification, from when it's in temporary status, there would be no access other than fire and police rescue. There would be no, we wouldn't work with any construction activities or access to some. It would be in a temporary emergency use only.
Okay, Suzanne?
I just wanted to say hi, Ed. I forgot. It's been a long time. Nice seeing you again. And you're still around. That's great.
Still alive. Any other questions? Sorry. I missed you before. Sorry.
I know, that's right. For clarification, the condos, both ends, I'm assuming they're garages?
Yes.
Okay, so that takes care of that parking. The only other comment I'd make is your self-storage unit. Why do you need that?
You ever lived in a condo?
He's saying that, you know, I don't need a house. I need a small, like space in a butler building for a garage with all the stuff that I need.
Yeah, there's definitely a need for it.
I think there's, and I'll let Kevin speak to that too. But yeah, just that we find the need of when folks are downsizing to either apartments or smaller living condos. That they haven't let go of that stuff yet.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. We own and manage, you know, over a thousand units in New Hampshire and throughout. And we find that when no storage is provided, then it's piled up on the outsides and in common spaces and things like that. So, you know, by having a place to have it, you know, stored in a neat orderly fashion in a building that looks like it should be storing materials. It alleviates a lot of problems that could come up throughout the rest of the development.
I guess my comment though is I kind of get why we need it. I think we all should downsize.
I agree.
But, and that could be said at my house, believe me. But I guess my comment, I look at this and I think it's really impressive and I think it's really great design. The self-storage kind of sticks out to me. I feel like you're coming from the north and what are you going to see? You don't see this great village space. Or this village green, you see a self-storage unit. And, and I mean, and then if you're going the other way. I guess my question would be, I'd consider is there any way you can, place you can put it that it's not really as visible as it is?
Or maybe work it into some of the commercial.
Yeah, just work.
Space or something.
Or put it somewhere where it's just not, to me, it just, I wouldn't pay a lot of money here looking when I leave. I go down to self-storage.
Yeah, no, that is.
I like the design. I like the design. Yeah, it's just an eyesore.
There's definitely some ways to design it, I think, a little bit more attractively and kind of push it out of the way as opposed to having it front and center.
Just one last thought and I suppose, you know, we have in our regs considerations for renewable energy. This is a huge development and I really would encourage you to see if there's some creative ways to somehow work some sort of renewable energy components in here. As much as possible.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, as a developer, we do always look for ways to green a project up. And making them as energy efficient as possible, you know, lighting, we mentioned, you know, EV charging stations. And we do have a lot of rooftops. So that could certainly be an opportunity for some solar arrays in those. And there's some other different things that we are looking at from that aspect. So yeah, definitely point taken.
Thank you.
Some nice covered parking areas with solar or, you're not proposing to dam the river?
I was just going to say, please don't put.
Okay, let's, let's open it up to public testimony. See if anybody in the audience has any questions or concerns about this. Yes, thank you very much. So we'll have you guys step back. If you could bring your stuff with you and step back, that would be great. And just, we may have you come back up. We may not.
Sure, okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for, thanks. Hi there. If you could state your name for the record?
First name Elizabeth, the last name Zelog. Do you want me to spell that?
Yes, please.
Actually, if you could just sign in before you.
Yeah, before you leave. That's fine.
I have to be honest with you. Before I came to this meeting, I was fifty fifty. I know that we need housing. But I live on Sewell's Falls Road. After seeing the pictures and the enormity of what is going to be there, I can't support it. I know that's an unpopular opinion probably for some of you, but I cannot support it. The traffic on Sewell's Falls Road is horrendous now, especially on a Sunday when everybody's cutting through, coming from the north. There's no sidewalks. There's barely any sidewalks on Sewell's Falls Road. I've complained about that. I just, it's just going to be awful. It's just going to be awful. I have to sometimes close my windows on a Sunday because the traffic is just so bad. I consider myself an environmentalist. I love, my church is the forest. So to see that part of Concord be destroyed breaks my heart. When the bridge on Sewell's Falls Road was being put in and they cut down the trees, I stood there with my dog and cried. I mean, that's how crazy I am. But I feel that that is such a beautiful part of the city, it being so close to the river, the woods. I know there's people that go hunting out there sometimes, go fishing out there. I don't know, I just, I just don't think that's, it's just not going to be a nice area for that. The pollution from the lights, right now I can see the stars. I just, I can't support the project. And I feel awful saying that because I know that we need housing. But I'm going to probably say what you didn't want to say, not in my backyard.
Okay, any questions? Thank you for your testimony. If you could just sign in, that'd be great. Anybody else from the audience? Questions or concerns? You can come on in and have a seat in the middle there. Love you signing afterwards.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Brian Murphy. B R I E N. A little bit different. I'm supporting this project on a few different fronts. I'm a business owner on Whitney Road, co-owner of Boyce Highlands. And I'm also the co-chairman of the Economic Development Committee for the BIA for the state. And workforce housing, housing in general is very near and dear to my heart. Seventeen percent of the state's budget is through small business and we need employees and we need places for folks to live. As far as the impact, I understand what people are talking about, but a couple of years ago, the city was nice enough to listen to us. And moved the gate from the end of my property right up to the end of the property. And because there were drug dealers going down in there, there were people dumping trash down in there. And now that access has been blocked and it's very clean and very neat and very well taken care of.
For the record, that's at the end of Hannah Dustin Drive?
This is, I own two properties. One is on Whitney Road and the other's on Hannah Dustin.
Okay.
So this gate is on the end of Whitney Road.
Okay.
Right after Merchant's Way.
Gotcha, okay.
So the folks have been to my office. They've gone through the plan. They presented to the Business Industry Association, the Economic Development Committee. And I think you folks have got some great ideas here with helping them to move this along. Can't stress enough that we support a well managed, a well concept design plan. And your help, I'm fully supporting this. And I sent a letter to you folks earlier this week, supporting this plan. And you've come up with a lot of great ideas here tonight. And just as a sidebar, come to Baltimore, Washington for a day and you'll never complain about Mountain Road again. It's quite a bit different. But I understand, I'm a transplant to New Hampshire. I've been up here for seventeen years and it's my home and I absolutely love this state and I love that one voice counts in this state. And it's fun to see the government at work. So, thank you very much.
Questions?
I was just going to say, there's a reason we don't live there. We don't want that traffic.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else? Yep, come on up. I'll have you scoot over there if you can, over to the other side, Brian. Just over on that other table. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Hi, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Lisa Bowden. I'm pretty new to Concord, but born and raised in the Granite State. So really happy to be living in the city. Small, feels like a town. It's wonderful. This sounds like a really incredible and important project. We are twenty-three thousand five hundred units of housing short in New Hampshire. The housing crisis is most severe for vulnerable citizens. I have a few concerns about this project. And I think with some minor changes, this would be a really incredible addition to our great state and this wonderful city. So if you're going to have Starbucks, if you're going to have retail operations, workforce housing is not going to meet the needs of those low income wage earners. Who you're going to have working in the village. So I think this project really needs to have affordable, dedicated affordable housing units. Workforce housing rents only exist for the life of the term of the loan in most cases. So the planning board is going to want to know, is it going to be five years of workforce housing, fifteen years of workforce housing? Because that housing converts to market rate. And if you don't know, Invest New Hampshire, the governor's program. That workforce housing rental, rent stabilization is only required for five years in the Invest New Hampshire program. So I really believe that in order to make this a shining jewel for a housing and multimodal small village project here in New Hampshire. To make it the real jewel that it should be, there should be affordable housing units. And I think that the planning board also needs to make sure that both in the workforce housing as well as in the affordable housing. Developer can decide what they want to do with the market rate housing. There needs to be universally designed units. We need those not only for senior citizens, but we need it obviously for people with disabilities. I want to remind everyone that we are all a birth, an accident, or a decade away from being inside the disability community. And we can meet the needs of all Granite staters if we have mixed socio-economic neighborhoods that are designed for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Jeff said you sign in if you could.
Peter, can you just get the signer over for her?
Any other questions? Yep, come on up. If you could state your name for the record?
Yes, good evening. Name is Ron Rayner. Retired engineer, wastewater background, environmental, predominantly with industry. Two very quick questions and then we can just move on and I'll try to get through it expeditiously. This development will be served by both city water and sewer? Yes?
That I don't know. City water and sewer? Yes?
Correct.
Yes.
Will the wastewater be directed to Hall Street or Pennacook?
I believe the intent at this point is Hall Street.
It could be either way, but most likely south to Hall Street.
Okay. Thank you. So with that in mind, I'm sure this will be of no surprise to Ed Robirish. But so when they do calculations relative to water demand, it obviously should be based on peak demand for the entire built out unit. In combination with a fire at one of the buildings. That is a peak worst case condition for water supply. Similarly, on wastewater, there should be both average daily flow and max daily flow computations done as well as peak. Peak generally occurs four to nine PM, six to nine AM. Snow plowing, and this also applies to the Steeplegate Mall complex, although I know we're not there yet. But on snow plowing, so I commend the developer for having garages associated with the condominium units. But on the workforce housing, on the apartment type structures, I believe it would greatly, dramatically improve. Snow plowing, snow removal operations if they provided carports. Provide carports. You're not moving cars. You're not getting people into cussing contests because all this isn't, this wasn't plowed. And I can't get over the ice dams and everything else. So carports, if done correctly, can be made quite attractive through plantings. And at the end, and I think, Richard, you had mentioned this about covered storage. And others had mentioned for bike storage being on the interior, a cost effective way perhaps of providing bike storage. Would be to have one bay at each end of the carport dedicated for bikes, have bike racks so they can be locked. So that I think would not only provide for bike storage undercover, but it would also allow to facilitate and prevent a fiasco. When it comes to snowstorms and snow plowing. Similarly, there should be an area designated for snow storage. So that when it does, it is stockpiled, will remain on site and allowed to melt or it's going to be hauled off. Last thing would be stormwater. Last thing would be stormwater. It mentioned that there would be some type of, it was vague, but some type of recharge. So I would strongly encourage the, any precipitation to be, go into the ground through infiltration basins, they are available, he's aware of that, to recharge the groundwater and with overflow capability at the very end of it to an outlet, to a stream, and eventually to the Merrimack. So I would encourage and agree with recharge in that area. And there is two last things. Merrimack River, I have kayaked it quite a bit in that section. There is erosion on the banks. Is it possible concealable? It's gonna be costly, but it may well be worthwhile adding riprap at the base of the dunes so that we minimize any future erosion. And futuristically, when they do come up with numbers for green space, the number was given forty-two percent is green space. Define how is that computed? Obviously, it's roofs, it's roadways. But does it include parking areas? Because there can be, parking now does have porous pavement. So I don't know if that's part of the green space or not. So again, not getting into the weeds, we don't need to. But define it futuristically on future semillas.
Okay, great. Questions? Mr. Reiner? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Okay.
Thanks.
Oh, we gotta sign it.
Yep, over here if you could. Any other questions or concerns about this application?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's been a long meeting so far, so we'll make this very quick. David Roscio and Laurie Roscio from Interchange Development. So we're the owners of the Merchant's Way development. We are the butters to the north. We're generally in support of this project and want you folks to know that. And we believe that the project complements the Merchant's Way development. It's close and the residents could bike or walk from Merchant's Way to Monitor Way. And we believe this works. Two concerns, we wanna make sure that the investments that were made on Whitney Road and Route Four and the roundabouts, they were designed to support area growth and traffic to and from Merchant's Way. And we wanna make sure that we can finish what we started. That's sort of one of our concerns. We look forward to reviewing the traffic studies to be done for this project. And just a second quick one, we just wanna make sure that the developers in the city are chatting with the Wind Waste folks to accommodate that failed culvert, which I believe has not only the city municipal water line and the earth above the failed culvert, but also the water supply to the Merrimack River that serves the Wind Waste facility.
The topic of conversation.
Right.
Yep.
Any other questions for us?
Questions for Rosios? Nope.
Thank you much.
Thank you for your testimony.
I have one quick one. We talked a little bit about the bicycle or the walking path connection. And from your end of it, what does that look like?
Well, I did actually wanna mention, we are obligated to and have been putting in sidewalks along Whitney Road. So we already have a sidewalk, we're gonna be extending it even further to the Willabradar driveway.
Okay.
Essentially, the length of our frontage, there's no sidewalk. So, and there's sidewalks within our entire development. I don't think you can really put a connection anywhere other than whatever the crossing is that is formed over Burnham Brook because Burnham Brook itself is a tremendous ravine. So that is your only way of getting over to Merchant's Way.
Do you anticipate participating with them on some connection of some sort in your vision?
Well, certainly, we will build that sidewalk to the southern bound, of southern bound or connection to the Wind Waste property, for sure.
Where we abut their project is all defined by Burnham Brook.
Okay.
So, and where Burnham Brook is crossed is actually the Wind Waste project. So we don't own any land that abuts their project that isn't separated by a tremendous ravine caused by Burnham Brook.
Swinging bridge, swinging bridge.
Yeah, you'd have to, yeah, you'd really, it'd be quite a traverse.
No suspension bridge?
You could do a suspension bridge, that might be it.
On the list.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for testimony. Any other comments or questions regarding this application?
All right.
Hi. If you could state your name for the record.
Alan Robitis. I wrote this up, I'll just read it for you guys real quickly, trying to be expeditious with time. I actually wrote this up regards to the mall development project, but I think it fits in just as well here, especially listening to the concerns that the board has about traffic and every other thing that you guys brought forth that was reasonable. So I'll zip through this and then if you have any questions, please feel free. Good evening, my name is Alan Robitis and I'm a resident of Ward Five in the West End. I must also disclose that I am employed by the City of Concord as a fire captain responsible for the Heights Fire Station facility. I'm not here on behalf of the fire department, nor do I wanna represent any of their thought process in any of this. But I admittedly would be remiss to say that my personal opinions are not shaped somewhat by my professional experiences. To start, I very much do recognize that there is a very real housing crisis that Concord is facing. And if you were to add the word affordable to housing, the difficulty in finding suitable housing gets much, much worse. This is a challenge that I see on the horizon for my own two children in the next few years. And I'm not sure at times that they will ever have the same opportunities that I had as a young adult. In my twenty-two years as a resident of this city, the falling of apartment builds have taken place. This is not a comprehensive list. This is literally the ones I could think of off the top of my head and I'm probably missing a number of them. Eight and Twelve Pine Acres Road, Twenty-three Triangle Park Drive, Canal Street two times, Cherry Street times two buildings, Parmenter Road Development, Menino Place on Store Street, Thirteen and Nineteen Old Sun Cook Road, Sandwood Crossing, Rosemary Way Apartments in Pennacook, the current apartments under construction on Pembroke Road, the current apartments under construction on Langdon Street, the current project under construction at Thirty-two South Main Street. Projects that I can think of that are possible or in the works include, and again, please understand, this is not a complete list. This is just the ones I could think of. The mall development project, Old Loudoun Road for possible three buildings. Sheep Davis Road across from Sam's Club for one building. A possible build at the Sprague Electric property. Sewell Falls, Whitney Road area possible development, which I must commend you, the presentation was very nice. Phoenix Hall redevelopment with possible apartments. All this development causes impacts throughout our city. More strain on the water system and sewage treatment facility due to more use, more students in classrooms throughout the school districts. More people in the area means more usage for our parks. More people means more strain will be placed on our police department who clearly seem to be at the breaking point, as proven with the recent appropriation of funds in an attempt to keep the officers working, who have already been burning the candle at both ends. Concord Hospital wait times are out of control already and I understand that the emergency department is that of the busiest in the state. More people in this area can only make that worse. The fire department has impacts that I don't care to elaborate upon due to my conflict of interest. More people equals more traffic, something the city has grappled with for years with no real improvements or even a plan for Loudoun Road specifically. I know it's not in the purview of the planning board to dictate service levels in this city as that's probably more of a city council area. If we keep developing without adjusting our service capacity appropriately, we are effectively stealing available services away from our current residents and giving some of that service availability to the fictitious residents who do not yet call Concord home. For the last two decades, we have proven as a city that we will not commit to keeping up with the demands that this growth burdens our city departments with. Very recently, when speaking about the half-million-dollar appropriation for the retention bonuses for our police department, Councilor Grady Sexton said the following in response to Councilor Rice Hawkins' motion. "In a time where we have so few officers as a result of vacancies, now is not the time to be putting additional work on their plates." Perhaps we should use Councilor Grady Sexton's comments as a compass bearing, not just about the police department, but for circumstances like this one and not place more unsupported burden on all of our city departments. In closing, I stand not only against this project moving forward, but perhaps we should look more at a moratorium of all multifamily residential development until we are provided a comprehensive plan to increase our service capacity throughout the various city departments. Please do not consider, please do not continue this unsupported growth as you are leaving your current residents with an unfair burden to bear.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? If you could just sign in right over to the right there, that would be great. Okay, yeah, come on up, sir. If you could state your name for the record.
My name is Steve Henninger. And this is beginning to sound like exactly what I came here and listened to in nineteen eighty-seven. That year, we did fifteen hundred new dwelling units. And we had planning board meetings on until one o'clock in the morning. But what I wanted to speak about was not about any of that. I just wanted to reiterate that the planning board had excellent comments about this project. One, I think it was extremely cogent to say that it's very important to have a second emergency access for this project, for this. Second, I thought it was very appropriate to indicate that it seems very inappropriate to have so much prime land devoted to mini warehousing, storage. If you're gonna have that in this project, it should be in allocations that are less visible and less valuable. I had a friend who was a developer and he built a large mini warehouse in South Florida at an interstate interchange. And his idea was, that was just a good place to keep the land until he could build something better. And that may be the, that may be the actual function of that purpose. But it can always be torn down because the value of that building is next to nothing conversant to value of the land, once that project is successful. The third thing I wanted to say, and I'm having a hard time remembering it, is that the Whitney Road was originally conceived as a collector roadway for a commercial industrial development with heavy truck traffic and to facilitate that traffic to go from Sewell Falls to Route Four and to the interchange. This is no longer that type of road under this proposal. And to continue it as a straight shot down there is going to make it very difficult to calm that traffic through that development. And I think the thought of having it come as a straight shot through that development needs to be rethought by the developer in order to make that community center function properly. I think that's a good idea, but I think the design of the road going straight through like that is gonna make it very hard and very difficult to insert traffic calming measures into that project to make that work. And I probably forgot something else I wanted to tell you.
We'll give you another chance at the next meeting.
What you've been bringing up are some good comments.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Henninger?
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thanks very much. On the other one over there.
All right.
There you go. Any other questions or comments? Come on up. Middle, that'd be great, thank you. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record.
Thank you.
That'll just, it'll pick you up.
Ani Malakai, and I am a happy resident of Pennacook. So I have a couple of thoughts here. I've listened to the presentation, I've listened to the comments from the board and from the audience. And I think, to start it off, I think the saddest thing that I've heard is not in my backyard. And, you know, change costs us something and it's important to embrace that. Even if you might miss a few stars, does it help other people have somewhere to live, somewhere to work, and other elements? I think those things are important. You know, from my perspective, and I understand what people are saying, traffic and all those things.
Hang on one sec, can we just tell him to pick up his glasses there? Hey, Steve?
I thought I did.
Thank you, continue, sorry.
No, Laurie's. So where I live, where my house is, it's going to be a block away from the new park. Will there be noise pollution? Absolutely. Will there be traffic? Absolutely. Will there be all of these things? Absolutely. But I attended all of the Pennacook Village meetings and I firmly embrace the park. Why? Because it is an amazing idea and it's something that's great and something that will help Pennacook overall. And if I, you know, it's a little loud, I mean, I can't believe it's gonna be any louder than the motorcycles that go through the traffic circle. But if it is, you know, I've lived there for three years, I'll suck it up and get over it, right? Because the change is what we need. It's how we grow, it's how we, if you're looking at finances, increase our tax base. It's how we incorporate other people into our community. And I've had the privilege to live in New Hampshire for thirteen years, but I've also had the amazing privilege to live in a variety of places. I've lived in big states, I've lived in small places, I've visited other countries. And a development similar to this is something that incorporates a lot of what I've seen in other places and brings it and makes it more of a small-town feel. But it still keeps the culture, the attitude, the residential, the neighborhood feel of what you want when you think of Concord, when you think of New Hampshire. But it also allows us to look at things differently, to almost imagine that you're on a boulevard somewhere in another country, right? Because it gives you different opportunities. And I think if we do not move forward with this, and I know this was a preliminary meeting and it was conversations and there are more talks to be had, but I think if we don't move forward with something like this, then I think we are losing out as a village of Pennacook, but also for the City of Concord. And one of the things I noticed when I moved here, which I'm from Atlanta, Georgia, and so certainly most communities are bedroom communities, and that's great, that's wonderful. But you do, when you have that, you do trade off for some of the services that you need. And everyone, everywhere, for the last decade has been saying diversity, inclusion, diversity, inclusion. But if it's not in your backyard, how are you diverse or who are you including? And I would say no one. So, yes, it's going to be growing pains, yes. There'll be more noise, yes, there'll be more cars. But there'll be more people from a variety of places. And maybe some of the restaurants will be Asian fusion or Indian or whatever you can imagine to embrace the people that we already have here and to hopefully encourage more people to move here. You know, there's so many negative things that are said about New Hampshire based on the demographics. And I eschew all of that. I love New Hampshire, I would not want to live anywhere else. I have been a welcome member of this state from the first day I moved here when we lived in Henneker, New Hampshire, the only one on earth. And then moving to Pembroke and now living as a homeowner in Pennacook. New Hampshire has embraced me. And for me, it's important for New Hampshire to embrace change and to move things forward. You know, there has to be a way to figure this out, to not say no, but to figure out how we do this. I appreciate what the firefighter said, I understand that it's hard. I worked on an ad hoc committee to increase fire retention and recruitment. So I get it, like, it's very, very difficult. And I have a slight understanding about the services. It is hard, but maybe we look at it in a little bit of a different perspective. You know, as you have more people coming in, then the city can't look away from the needs that are. And if there's more revenue that's being created by the project that we're talking about or the Whitney, excuse me, or the Exit Seventeen project. And let me just tell you, I've had conversations with this wonderful couple here and the developers for this project that we're discussing now. And they have been nothing but amazing and welcoming and wanting to hear comments from the community. So I would say, as this project moves forward, and I hope it does, that you would not turn it away and that you would not stop the growth and development that not only Concord needs, but my wonderful little village of Pennacook, that we should welcome that. And someone who's lived in other places, it's hard to not embrace the things, the new ideas and the wonderful opportunities that are coming here for a variety of people that already live here and that may want to move here. And again, if you're, if everyone is screaming and shouting and being excited about diversity and inclusion, then we need to look at that and make that, maybe that's the cornerstone. and inclusion, then we need to look at that and make that, maybe that's the cornerstone, and then we just figure the rest out. I think I have one more thing, and then I'll let you all go. Oh, I know there were some comments about the, about the storage space. There's a little city called College Park in Atlanta, Georgia, and there were very active community members that worked with developers that developed this corridor. And the community came out and made sure that there weren't tons of neon signs and all of these things, and that the development looked like it belonged in the community. Well, I can't imagine that these developers couldn't work on some sort of an overlay. If their, if their feeling is that people need storage, you know, of course, you all are smarter than me, and you can have that conversation, but maybe it's not a huge, big, white building in the middle of somewhere. Maybe it, maybe it has nice architecture, so it looks like it belongs with whatever the condos or townhouses or whatever it is that's right in that area. I think those are really small, almost cosmetic things that could be done, and would also help to increase what the, what the neighborhood looks like. So again, I thank you for allowing me to speak, and as you can tell, I am very much in favor of this project. I will continue to be in favor of this project, and I hope that all of the "not in my backyard" people will take a moment and rethink that, and we can figure out the traffic. And if you, even in another community in Atlanta, there's new subdivisions that are being built, and they have these really huge, what do you call them?
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps, yeah. But they're not the, but they're not the ones, the little skinny ones, but they're the really big ones. So if those are things that need to be, and I hate them with a passion, but I understand the purpose, and so if those are things that need to be added, I can't imagine, we can't have those conversations and figure this out. We need this, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. The audience, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, come on up. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Phil Leary. I want to thank the chair and the board for letting me speak tonight. I'm the organizer with DC 35 Painters and Allied Trades. We represent painters, painters, and glazers. I'm also the vice president of the Hampshire Building and Construction Trades. I'm all for this project. We're for building stuff. We just want to make sure we do responsible contractors. We leave that out at every, every planning board meeting I go to. Everybody talks about sidewalks and trees and roads and everything else, but we want to know who's building the project. We want to have responsible contractors, GCs, subcontractors, because it's your money. It's the constituents' money, the taxpayers' money that are paying for these projects, so, you know, we got to do it with responsible contractors. I'm seeing it in Manchester right now. Callahan Construction, tax fraud and wage theft. Avatac Construction, $175,000 in wage theft in Massachusetts. So we need to build these projects using responsible contractors. The unions are great. We pay a fair living wage. We pay benefits. We pay retirement, pensions, et cetera. So we got to move forward using responsible contractors. And I will go to every planning board meeting and say the same thing over and over and over again. We have to do this with responsible contractors, preferably union contractors. We do everything the right way. We just want to spend the taxpayers' money the way it's supposed to be spent, and make sure that we're holding the developers and the GCs and the subcontractors to, you know, to where they're supposed to be. So, thank you.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Leary, for your testimony. If you could just sign in, that would be great. Any other, come on up. If you could state your name for the record?
Yep. Hello, my name is Aaron Frack Monroe. I'm a resident of Concord. First moved here and was a renter, and now I own a home. I'd like to thank the developer for looking at the Concord Next proposed Form-based Code and really embracing it and building to it. I generally agree with the comments of the board. There are a lot of good things, a lot of items that can be looked at, tweaked a little bit. Like to know if the planning board can bring in T-PAC, T-PAC Bike Ped Committee, figure out what the bike connections on either end might look like. Because two miles of a bikeway with no connections elsewhere is, is nice but not great. And then, I think Jeff, you mentioned parking. What would that look like minimized down? So just reiterate that.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. The developers don't have to come back up if you don't want to, but if you, if you want to, that's fine. I don't know that we have any more comments or questions for you, but if you've got what you need, or you heard what you, what you want to hear. Or if you didn't want to hear it, but you heard it anyways.
No, I just wanted to say thanks again for the time. And also, you know, we've been in front of a lot of planning boards, and we can tell how the issue in New Hampshire has just gotten worse and worse, because the only people that we used to hear from are the people that oppose the project, and generally, people that are in favor of a project support it, and they're like, "Great, I don't need to say anything. I want that to go through." But you can tell we've hit a whole 'nother level when the amount of support has come out for a project, so I just want to point that out.
They enjoy coming to these meetings, that's why. Sorry, hang on just a second.
Yeah, I just, I have a quick thought and a question. So we were talking about the number of housing units that we have coming online and others that may be in the future, and you're 900 and however many. Do you think that this is going to attract more people and increase our population?
Well, yes, but that's a good thing. So when was the last time you went to a restaurant and you saw that restaurant full because there was enough service staff there? You can't. There's no service staff. You go to the hospital, you try to make an appointment. There's not enough people that they can hire to service those vacancies. And the vacancies in, you know, city government all the way through, that is a large result because there's not enough of a workforce here to be able to fill those vacancies. We need to build more housing in order to fill those. We have an aging population, and our aging population is not going to go back to work to fill all those vacant positions that all these jobs and employers need to fill. It's going to take housing to fill that, so I guess that's my comment to that.
Okay, whoops. Hang on, hang on. Carol?
I have one other thought.
Okay. Yep.
Just in your moving forward with plans, I'd be interested in hearing kind of how you plan to handle waste management, and if there will be opportunities for residents of these units to recycle on site so that everything isn't going into dumpsters.
Sure, I mean, that's a really good, very good point. We haven't gotten to that point in the planning process yet, but definitely something that will absolutely be considered.
So you're thinking about it when you get to that point.
For sure.
Heather?
I would just have one suggestion for you. If you do think that Bluebird might be a potential tenant for that storage space, you should probably include some architectural or some graphics showing people what that actually looks like.
Sure.
Because it's not a typical storage space, and people probably don't realize what it, what it looks like.
Right.
That might dispel some of the concerns or conversation if you just sort of say, "And this is what this could look like."
Right, yeah, no, that's-
You've just got boxes in there, which I know, I understand, you're just using 3D boxes to show mass and scale.
Yeah.
But if you actually throw some images of their architecture like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, that is a good point, and we do, we have thought about that, and I guess I could say that, you know, every development we've been involved in, it, there's always a certain element of challenge and something that you're not 100% quite sure yet when you first present it. But, you know, our plan has evolved up to this point, and it can certainly continue to evolve, so that's something that we know we're leaving here tonight that we've got to take another look at.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And for the members of the audience and those listening at home, remember, this is comprehensive development, which means, sorry.
Preliminary design.
Preliminary design review, which means it's a review and feedback, and there'll be several more opportunities for public testimony once plans kind of solidified and go from there. All right. I think Teresa's opening the window because it's hot as the dickens up here. Let's do this. Let's, let's close the public hearing. We don't have to do anything for votes or anything. We're going to start with the next one. We'll read the next one into the record, but I do want to give the opportunity to board members to take a quick bio break if you need to while we get set up for the next one. Five minutes would be great, and if you guys from the, from the 7H, which is Onyx Partners LLC, if you want to, or Limited Development, if you want to get started coming up and getting set up, we will, we'll be back in five minutes. Let's read item 78 into the record if we could.
Ari Pollock, on behalf, on behalf of Onyx Partners, request comprehensive development plan approval for a mixed-use development consisting of residential apartments, restaurant, retail, and professional offices, office uses at 260 to 282 Loudon Road, the Steeplegate Mall, and Real Cinema Properties in the Gateway Performance District. So this is, let me just give a, this is the comprehensive development plan approval. We talked with the applicants about, you know, the requirements for that, and they're, they don't meet them at this time, but they wanted to come and present to the community and to the board to get feedback. And then when they address all the issues that they need to, they'll, they'll be seeking an approval. So we're not recommending approval at this meeting, but feedback.
Perfect. Welcome to the table. If you guys could state your name for the record?
Thank you so much. I'll do some introductions, and then we're each going to have a short role to play here in our presentation. I'm Ari Pollock with the Gallagher Law Firm here in Concord. I'm here for the developer and applicant, Onyx Partners Limited. Joining me from Onyx to my left is Doug Richardson, Executive Vice President of Development. And somewhere behind me, I believe, there he is, is Brian Kaplan, also Development Officer with Onyx. To my far right is Wayne Morrell of Jones and Beach, doing our civil and site engineering work. To my immediate right is Robert Del Savio from M. Bark Design, our architectural design group. And to his right, we have Jen Martell of Copley Wolf Design Group, doing our landscape architecture. If you're on the planning board and you're not excited about redevelopment of the Steeplegate Mall, then you need to find a new committee to serve on, because this is it. And I, and I hope, I hope you take that as the joke that it is, but this is excitement. This is exciting. Generally, on Onyx Partners, they have a proven track record of a number of high-quality development and redevelopment projects here in New Hampshire and also around New England. Doug's going to share some of those examples with you in his remarks. We've really assembled a dream team of professionals with extensive experience in central and southern New Hampshire. Rob and Jen are going to share some of their prior project experiences so that you can see the quality of the folks that we've brought together for this. And as to the site, you know, we know in this room, Steeplegate has a long, varied history. From its initial development and its mall heydays to the more recent years where the property got tired, and then very tired, and then frankly emptied. And it has experienced significant wins of change. This site is very ready for revitalization and a new identity. And so Onyx recently took title to the Steeplegate property. Ownership obstacles are now resolved, and they're on, they're in this project with both feet. And if, if that isn't grounds for celebration, I don't know what it is. We're ready to make quick progress to reimagine this site with development ideas that frankly today are pretty rare around Concord. The mall was once the crown jewel of the city. It was its largest contributor of taxes citywide. Think about the contrast to today. In recent years, the city saw tax revenues stagnate and then significantly decline. Redevelopment would again restore the taxable value of the mall, but more importantly, it would fulfill some long-term goals that the city has announced within the urban area, not on the outskirts, not in a green field, not in a place where development is proposed for either the first time or in any significant scale, but a retail, a retail mixed-use project where the retail is real, not just an afterthought to housing. And within a performance district where the ordinance, again, whether you're talking about the next-gen version of what's to come or today's ordinance, it really- about the next-gen version of what's to come, or today's ordinance, it really is about performance, and this is our chance. The city clearly has a documented housing shortage. The vacancy rate is, is too low. You can use whatever source of statistics you want. You'll also learn that the housing stock has an age-vintage of 30 to 50 years old. This means energy efficiencies, significant maintenance burdens on whoever is owning it, and whoever is paying rent if it's not owned by occupiers, and a significant lack of modern conveniences, whether it be air conditioning, or security, or whatever. Bringing in nationally-recognized retailers, some are there already, will help anchor this property and further elevate the city of Concord as a retail regional destination. It is already, it will further that mission. The housing element anchors the retail with an on-presents customer base. It's a one-stop shop. You can live, you can work, and you can truly play all in the same place. What does that mean? It means less traffic, it means less drain on services, it means you're doing things with less of a footprint, all good things. Others are here to discuss the project features, and the details will follow in the months to come. This really is an introductory discussion. But our project will feature pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, a publicly accessible open space area with waterfront, infrastructure upgrades to roads, water, utilities, perpetual easements to the city. It's all in reach of the downtown. There are plenty of services that surround this property that are there today and can be complemented by what's to come. Before I turn things over to Doug and the technical team, I wanted to just leave you with one more thought, and it's an old proverb, but it's, it's a proverb because it's true. Time kills all deals. In this case, we are currently in the midst of significant disruptions in the capital markets, significant inflation in interest rates, significant political unrest, at least as of the minute I walked in here, we did not have a Speaker of the United States House of Representatives, and we have multiple global battlefields raging in Eastern Europe and the Middle East. What does that mean for dear old Concord, New Hampshire? It means that outside factors are going to be at play for development projects and financeability and bankability of development projects. And it, and right now, we have a tight window to get projects like this off the ground, onto the ground, and out of the ground. And if we work together to be efficient about this process, then we can develop a great project. If we get mired in details, and I'm not, this is not a complaint, we're just starting, but if we have that tendency to get mired in details, this opportunity could wither, and that would be a true shame when you look at what's there today and how time has treated that property. So, great opportunity. We're really excited to be here. This is about as excited as I get, so I hope you can tell. And Doug is next.
Thank you very much. Doug Richardson, Onyx Partners. Sorry. Onyx is a company that's just over two years old in existence, but the partners and the key employees, four of them are from 15 years with Waterstone Properties. And Waterstone Properties has done extensive work in southern New Hampshire and Maine, of which we personally designed, permitted, developed, very successful projects, which I will show. We come from people that have been involved in an investment company of over 100 properties over 30 years. Currently, we're working with 3.8 million square feet of mixed-use retail, multifamily, office, and industrial, representing a value of over 850 million. We have longstanding relationships with over 450 tenants, including national tenants, and one of the things that we've excelled at is that we've targeted underutilized assets where the opportunity exists to enhance and add value. The management team, as I said, it's really five primary lead employees. There's three partners, and four of these individuals, as I said, were with Waterstone Properties, and the project team members have an average of over 30 years of direct development experience. This just shows our national reach. We do have a primary focus on the East Coast, but we have done projects in California because we have national tenant relationships, and we vertically integrate, you know, projects with them where they would like to go. This is just a card to show some of the tenants that we have and have worked with in the past. Now I'll get into some of the specific projects that we have done and are currently working on. Brickyard Square in Epping, New Hampshire, is a 250,000-square-foot mixed-use development. We acquired the site, designed, permitted, constructed a mixed-use facility with Market Basket, movie theaters, and some of the best of New Hampshire Magazine Restaurants in the center. It is very community-focused, and it has been a very successful project and very vibrant today. The other one is the Ridge at Rochester, New Hampshire. That's a 300,000-square-foot mixed-use. Again, anchored Market Basket, New Hampshire Liquor Store, Hobby Lobby Restaurants, also multifamily, we were working on before we separated off to Onyx, so that had multifamily as part of the project. Seabrook, New Hampshire, which includes the Hobby Lobby, Goodwill, Bob's Furniture, and the new Seabrook BJ's that you see at Exit One. All of those were designed, permitted, and constructed by these individuals. The two projects in Portsmouth, and we just wanted to show some residential experience. We did the Veridian in Portsmouth at the JV with Torrington Companies, and we also worked on West End Yards with Torrington Companies. And I even have to say, I'm still a part-owner in the Veridian. Those represent well over 350 units and 250,000 feet of retail. Scarborough, Maine, 100,000-square-foot center with Marshall's Home Goods, Petsmart, and Bob's Furniture, right next to the Super Walmart. Also, we did the Rock Row at Westbrook, Maine. That's the Market Basket Anchored Center with REI, which is the first phase of a over 1 million-square-foot mixed-use with residential. So we have, as I said, extensive experience in southern New Hampshire and Maine, and a new project that Onyx is doing is we've retained ownership of the Eastfield Mall in Springfield, Mass. It's a half-million-square-foot mall that is underutilized and vacant. Sounds familiar. And we are actually under demolition right now, and we're fully permitted for 390,000 feet of national retailers, 50,000 square feet of market-rate apartments, and 60,000 square feet of commercial. And that will be coming onboard summer of 2025. Thank you.
Interrupt at any time. Keep truckin'.
Good evening, Wayne Morrell from Jones and Beach Engineers. So, to talk about the site itself, so we have two parcels that we're going to be using as part of this development. The first one is the Steeplegate Mall. Steeplegate Mall is 50.19 acres. It's located in the Gateway Performance District. It's Loudon Road to the east, Deamonte Drive to the south, Sheep Davis Road to the west, and the City of Concord's land to the north. We have one driveway out on Loudon Road, two driveways on Deamonte Drive, and one off Sheep Davis Drive. The Applebee's and the TD Bank are on their own parcels on this, just on the outskirts of this property, but they do have access and utilities through the Steeplegate Mall. Currently, there is 563,453 square feet of existing building on the site. There is a sore easement and a pump station in the benefit of the city in the north side of the site, the parcel, and a number of other easements that go through this parcel. Regal Cinema Site is the second parcel. That's just to the north. That parcel is 9.11 acres. It was also in the Gateway Performance District. It's on the westerly side of Loudon Road with one access to Loudon Road. The building on that site is 27,300 square feet. So the total development area for this project is 59.3 acres with 59753 square feet of existing building. The proposal is to demolish a large portion of the, of the mall itself. There will be three portions of that, the existing mall that will remain. The first one will be the J.C. Penney at the front, which is 61,880 square feet, and then the two most westerly units, right now, there, it will house the Zoo Fitness and a trampoline park that's currently there, and those both are 70,191 square feet. Like I said, the rest of the, the site would be raised. On the Regal Cinema Site, the entire building would be raised on the Regal Cinema Site. A total of 392,311 square feet of retail uses on the two lots will, will be the entire project. The proposed driveway relocations on Deamonte Drive to align with the existing driveways across the street, and sidewalks and crosswalks will be added to promote pedestrian circulation. The first slide that we have, oh, this is the second slide. We have a four-story option of the apartments that shows 478 units. 50% of those would be one-bedroom, and 50% would be two-bedroom. And then we have a five-story apartment master plan that's in front of you right now that shows 625 units, again, 50% one-bedroom, 50% two-bedroom. We would need relief to go up to that five, five-story apartment building. Both of these apartment layouts show the adjacent park area close to the City of Concord's land, and also trail access that we are working with the city on, trying to get a trail that would go around that pond itself. The proposed right-of-ways through the property, we will be proposing a right-of-way on the north side of the, of the lot, for the Steeplegate Mall. That, that right-of-way will connect Loudon Road to Sheep Davis Drive, and then also another right-of-way that will go through the apartments to connect to Deamonte Drive. The right, the right-of-ways will be part of the overall subdivision plan that will be submitted to the town. We are in receipt of the comments from the City of Concord Community Development and Engineering, and will be working with the city to address these comments. And we are also aware of the sore infrastructure on the site, and we will be working with city engineering to work through those.
So as Ari said, I'm Rob Del Savio from M. Bark with the Project Architects. The images before you hear are just a sampling of some of the work that we've done before, with a good number of them actually in southern New Hampshire. Top left is Portsmouth, and bottom left is, in Dover, New Hampshire, is part of the Cochico Waterfront Development, it's about 450 units altogether, a series of different buildings. Image in the bottom, in the center, is in Woodmont Commons in Londonderry. And then the two images on the far right-hand side are in Dover, New Hampshire. It's a project we finished, about 130 units, about three years ago, and I wanted to show that a little bit, because it starts to talk about some of the materials we would be planning for the buildings that we're proposing here. There'd be a strong ground floor articulation, as shown here, some levels of brick above that before converting back to some other panelized product, or in some cases, may just be a clapboard product. The next slide. So this is sort of a 3D view of it, looking up from the sky. The residential buildings are all shaded in that sort of yellow-gold tone. The two buildings on the, on the right-hand side are four-story buildings. One of those abuts the existing portion of the mall building that will remain in place. And then the other three... These three are five-story buildings. Given that the site right now is pretty much entirely paved or built upon, we're trying to find a way to create some outdoor space for all the residents in some form of a courtyard. Maybe it's a courtyard that houses a pool or other amenity spaces, like the larger building here, but everybody's going to have some view out onto green space and have access to that green space, and we thought that was very important. And then this building obviously has the great look to the north over, out over the pond. So Jen's going to take you a little bit more through some of the site.
So before we move off of that one, so if you look at that one, the courtyard's, the courtyard's facing in, if you go back a slide on my deck anyways, it looks like the courtyard's facing the building. So did you flip them around? Is that the latest version?
Yeah, this one here is the latest one.
So what's the, what's the height difference between the R2 building and the existing mall? Is there a, is there an existing, are they going to match in height, or are they going to?
No, this one probably be about 20 feet taller than the mall, or 18 feet taller than the mall.
The R2 building?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's the current plan, is with the backed up to it and the?
Yeah, and then at some point, if this mall building does come down, we could extend that.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Go ahead, sorry.
We're, we're under obligation of some existing leases, and that's why it's been challenging.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get, I get why it's there. I just was concerned when I saw the other one with the courtyard facing the back of the zoo building, or whatever that existing building is, and this looks much better, so, okay.
Good evening, I'm Jen Martel with Copley Wolf, I'm the landscape architect on this project, and we've, we've really been focused on this residential area and trying to develop a landscape framework that can provide open space amenities for the residents, provide a feeling of, of it being a residential area or a mixed-use area, and, and hopefully not feel like you're kind of living in a parking lot. So I'm going to just go into some of the details for that right now. The overall framework is this north-south residential street that is accessed from Gateways off of Deamonte Drive, as well as from Sheep Davis Road over here, is how those, that street can be accessed, and the street would feel, it, it would feel like a nice, you know, urban residential street with sidewalks, on-street parking, and whatnot. And we can get into more details on that. And then at the terminus of the street would be a, sort of a trailhead element for that pond, the trail that would be going around the pond potentially, or at least just simply access down to the water, so that people could actually engage with the amenity a little bit better.
Next slide. Oops, sorry.
Yeah. This is a little hard to see, but we're also looking at providing both pedestrian, improved pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure on the site. So, I know it's a little hard to see, but there's a blue dash line along Deamonte, Deamonte Drive and Sheep Davis Road that would be a mixed-use bike pedestrian paved path that would provide access all along those areas, and also provide access to off-site as well.
It's the blue, the blue dotted one?
The blue dotted line, and then it also goes up through the north-south road, as well as across between all of the retail amenities.
So is that a sidewalk on the Sheep Davis roadside?
Yes, we are looking to work with the city and enhance pedestrian access there, and complement with that new curb cut the sidewalks that go to the retail across the street on Deamonte.
All the way down to Sam's Club and up the other side of the hill. Help us out with the catch housing with someone on the other side.
Get to the property line.
Turns out, though, the property's owned by other people. That's okay, we could probably get them, no kidding, go ahead, sorry, continue on, Jen.
In addition to the pedestrian and bicycle improvements to the site, we would, we're looking at opportunities for adding art, maybe working with local artists to provide sculptural elements within the landscape. These would help a lot for sort of creating a sense of place within this site, as well as wayfinding.
Love that idea.
We can go to the next slide. So just zooming in a little bit, I wanted to talk in more detail about the streetscape component, particularly on this north-south street. We really wanted to make it feel pedestrian-friendly by implementing some traffic calming measures at the intersections. So at each of these intersections, we're proposing some kind of textured pavement, as well as street trees, additional, more enhanced landscape plantings, and potentially some artwork elements along the streetscape. You know, we would also have some well-apportioned street furnishings, so that people have a place to stop and sit, or gather, maybe some tables and chairs, benches, and also potentially looking at some green stormwater infrastructure at the curbside to help with that infiltration and help really soak, soak up the rain. Yeah, and then, just taking a look at the courtyards, as Rob mentioned, these three buildings, each would have a courtyard that pretty much all of the units would be facing upon, and that the residents would have access to Courtyard A, which is the one at the top, and really the largest courtyard would be a large, or larger, more kind of active courtyard amenity for pretty much all the residents in the development. Courtyards is something that Copley Wolf does quite a bit. Multifamily is sort of our bread and butter, so we're pretty in tune with some of the residential amenities that people are looking for, and this would have, you know, things like a pool, open lawn space for fitness, or just for hanging out, probably some kind of fenced-in dog areas, because a lot of these residents, we understand, will probably have dogs, and also outdoor dining. we understand, will probably have dogs, and also outdoor dining. Courtyard B is a little bit more of an enclosed and private courtyard, sort of more passive, and we're thinking, you know, more like garden spaces and lawn areas and probably a little more outdoor dining. And then Courtyard C, being closest to the retail space, would probably be a little bit more public-facing with a bit of a plaza that shoppers could come and relax in, as well as potentially another dog area, a pavilion and whatnot. So this would be sort of a more, the more open courtyard.
Next.
Sure. And then the waterfront amenity that we talked about, sort of at the end of that north-south street, we're thinking of this as being a really sort of low-impact amenity, but a way for people to get up to the water, to see the water, and to even maybe engage with the water a little bit by getting closer to it. So having like an overlook feature right up here by the intersection, there is a pretty steep slope, so having some switchbacking trails through the existing trees that would get you down to a lower dock feature. And this drawing right here is just a sketch section. This is showing the proposed five-story building with the associated parking, the public road that would be cutting through here, that would have bike lanes on it, as well as the overlook with probably a small retaining wall. All of these would be existing trees that would remain, perhaps be limbed up just for visibility, but the plan is to kind of work around them and then have perhaps a small dock structure at the bottom if that's allowable. And these are just some.
The pond looks idyllic compared to the, compared to the actual pond.
Are you going to stock that pond?
We built a pond at the Seabrook BJ's, which was stocked and worked with the DES on having twelve-foot-deep areas to foster fish development. So people do actually go and fish at that.
Yeah, good. I wouldn't fish there now.
No.
That's it?
That's it? Okay.
Right, so that's our presentation. Again, this is preliminary where we have filed a comprehensive development plan application, but we recognize that we're at the beginning. We're happy to take feedback. I think at this, after tonight's discussion, we go back to staff's memo, planning, engineering comments. We look to address those, set up some internal meetings with the hope of getting back here as soon as we can. We understand there's no vote tonight.
Absolutely, and it's an intriguing, exciting development. I will let the board ask some questions here, and Counsel Pierce.
You were in the audience when we asked the prior applicants. I would just reiterate those same questions with the bike paths that you talked about, charging stations, what you heard, recreational opportunities, green space, renewable energy, and so on and so forth. What I do have, and this came up back when the sale was underway, is what is your communications plan with the existing tenants?
Brian, you want to take this one?
Sure.
Yeah, you can sit right on the end, that mic's hot, yep.
So again, Brian Kaplan with Toronto. So we have already communicated with a few tenants. We weren't able to communicate until the sale was completed due to just the nature of the sale. But we've already communicated with a few tenants, and we're going to be very transparent with everyone. We aren't clear on timing a hundred percent just yet. We're working with everyone here to go through the approval process and are very mindful of that. So it's hard to give these businesses exact timing because we're still working through the process. And so we're trying to be, you know, communicative with them on those items. And as timing becomes clearer, we want to give them as much heads-up as they can. The point that I like to make is the process is starting now for us to move forward and for them to start thinking about what that will look like for them. So for us, the process should be starting now for all the tenants, and as timing becomes clearer, that'll be communicated to them.
So you've got here on the plan that looks like there's three that are staying that are in the existing mall. How many, what's the number of other tenants that are still open for business in the mall itself?
So there are four other tenants that I'm aware of, and there is only one with a full lease. The others are license agreements that are month-to-month.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
So I was surprised to see the Costco, a big box, being put sort of back in the middle of this. I'm just curious, is that just for financial reasons or is there's demand in Concord for a Costco? I mean, how'd you come to that decision? Out of curiosity.
So you didn't hear any of us here tonight use those names. It was in...
Read it.
But you read it, and you read it in a credible source. But nonetheless, people at this table are afraid to do that, frankly, because we know this is the beginning stage at a long journey.
Sure.
And while we do have relationships and we do have commitments, they are all contingent commitments. And we simply can't predict, as Brian was saying, where this process ends and how we look when it ends. So do we think that that retailer would do very well here? Yes. Are they excited about it? Absolutely. They know the site, we've got a level of commitment. They're excited about this marketplace. Can I tell you that with absolute certainty it's going to happen? I cannot.
And I think, you know, we look at, we see it on the plan here, Costco on one and Whole Foods on the other, and we look at things without that in mind. We look at it and say, you know, whatever it is, and whether we think it's a terrible idea and don't want it to go there, or think it's a great idea and can't wait for it to be built and be there. We want to do it as expeditiously as possible. We want to do it quick. We want to be, you know, good partners, but we want to do it right. You know, we don't want to just rubber-stamp things and move forward. So we don't want to get down in the weeds and we don't want to, you know, we don't want to take longer than we need to take, but we want to make sure we dot the i's across the t's and make sure that we're doing it right, and from the city's perspective, doing what's best for the city. And this is a great development. Like you said, if there's anybody here that doesn't think that it needs to be redeveloped, it's, that's not what we're here for. We're here to look at it and say, is it the right, are we doing it the right way?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think we're all on the same page there. And I thank you for having that understanding. I mean, I think it's easy to see those names and think that it's a hundred percent, and it's not.
And we look, try to, again, look past it and say, you know, is it the right building? Is it the right size? Is it the right height? Is it the right traffic and whatnot? So, good point, Matt.
I wish the folks on Facebook would understand that.
Yeah, no, they don't.
And that's why I responded.
On both sides of the equation, they either love a project or they hate a project. There's nobody, nobody in the middle. So, next, Suzanne.
I'm kind of, my first reaction was it's woefully inadequate for the green space, in my opinion. But then I'm wondering, and you've got lots of driveways and access for cars, and why you decided to put a significant access road right between the residential buildings when that could probably be the only safe space between the buildings? And the idea that you would have to put traffic calming at the intersections means that you probably shouldn't have cars back there anyway, and that maybe that can enhance some of the outdoor space that basically has a bike path or people just walking from one end to the other safely.
Or just a hundred percent walking, so leave it all as pedestrian and not have cars.
Well, no cars, because there's no retail there, as far as I could see. I think those are more of the residential. And if there's retail, you could access it on the other side. So it just, it's going to be hard to make more green space, but to prioritize the cars in, like, surrounding every single cluster seems a little excessive to me, and not safe. So, and then I think it would also be worth considering trying to get some of these buildings to put solar panels on top, since they're flat. And when you've got these large parking areas to maybe try to break it up with some landscaping in the middle of them, not just at the ends, and significant enough planting area so that they'll not only survive, but they'll actually thrive. So, just some ideas.
Yeah, food for thought. I mean, the pulling, you could actually pull the buildings kind of together even, add more trees and more...
Well, you just have that open space between the...
Yeah, and have access all around the backside. Jeff?
So I'm excited to see this redevelop, I'll say that first thing. But as we always say on this board, responsible development, not just something that fits and maximizes every square inch of a site just because it means dollars. I look at this, and Susan, you hit exactly on the thing I was going to say. I would love to see in between those two residenials just be complete green space, pedestrian-only, that whole corridor. I don't know why you need a road up through there. You've got roads around the sides, you've got roads north, you know, east-west. Get them out of there. I mean, you've got limited parking in there. I look at this as a resident, I'm kind of wondering where am I parking compared to where my door is? How far am I carrying my grocery, my kids, everything else? I have to walk across these massive parking lots to get there. I hear people complain when the mall was open, they didn't like walking through the huge parking lot with kids and whatnot. This hasn't really changed much. I'd like to see more separator islands in between the parking where you could have trees and grass. I think if you're going to suddenly put six hundred and some-odd units out there, why don't you have a ball field? Just like soccer-field-sized ball field, if you can do it, or something half that size where people can go out. There are no parks up on this end of town near this. The nearest one is going to be down at the old dame's school, Keach Park. That's a long distance away for somebody to take children. It'd be great if you could have more of a park in here, and I don't mean just the little walking feature you have, but where people can get out and run and do frisbee and whatnot. Keep in mind, 106 is a state road, so you will have to coordinate with the state on your traffic studies, your scoping meetings.
We have a scoping meeting next Friday.
Is it concurrent with the city's so that we...
It was organized by the city.
Awesome. Because there used to be a signal there, and the city took it out when the mall kind of went...
No, the state took it out.
Oh, sorry, state took it out, sorry. My bad. I think some of the internal circulation could be cleaned up a little bit. I think you've got some odd corners because you've got existing buildings you're trying to keep. One I would say in particular is if you kind of come around the corner by the existing trampoline park, sightlines are a little tricky there, the way you come around the building. So if there's a way to push the curb out a little bit, make it easier. Last, I'll say, you heard me on the last site, if you've got a residential mixed with retail, is there a way to use shared parking calculations rather than, hey, we need one parking space for every square foot of retail, and then we need another one for every, can we combine these and cut down this to some sort of minimum? I look at that parking lot near, whatever that large big box is going to be, and it seems overwhelming as to whether the need is really going to be there for that minute.
As someone who goes to the Nashua one, I can tell you right now, every single parking spot is taken in the Nashua.
But you've got all the Massachusetts people coming to get attached.
But you get all the people, well, and you'll have all the people coming from Loudon and everywhere.
But I guess what, so there goes some other point is...
You're going to need some parking in that big box.
Yeah, it just, depending on what the big box is, it just, you know, we saw a lot of, except for Christmas time, we saw a lot empty parking spaces in the malls. So I just, I want to caution to overpark. And then the other thing is, I think there was a comment in here whether this should be regional development impact. Has that been determined by planning yet, or is that still?
I think, are you referring to the report?
Yeah.
So that was just something I wanted to bring up to the board that you should, you should...
Absolutely, as a development of regional impact.
I believe in it, and so I just would want to plug that in there.
And it's got huge development impacts for traffic through Loudon and Pembroke.
You could make that motion.
I'd like to make that motion, and if I can make that motion to get the ball started, that this is going to be a development of regional impact when we get there. I don't know if there's any opposition to that. We got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we will recognize this as a development of regional impact and notify the budding towns of the project and let them weigh in on their concerns.
And I only have one last thing real quick. Your plan said you had a multi-use path, but when you showed the section view, you said something about bike lanes. Is it a shared-use path, or is it a bike lane?
We'll work with the city, but in, for example, the project we did in Portsmouth on Route One, we did a ten-foot-wide sidewalk that allowed both uses.
Is that the one right behind U-Haul? Is that the one you're talking about?
No, no, by Starbucks.
Okay.
Not that that narrows it down at all, by Starbucks.
No, no, it does, for me, but if you are doing...
The third Starbucks on Route One, after the fourth Dunkin' Donuts.
I would just say in consideration, if you're doing a shared-use path, keep in mind that people tend to shy a couple feet away from each side if there's something right there. So if your shared parking is right, I mean, your shared use is along the road, those first couple feet aren't going to be used. And if it's along the parking area, it's not going to be used, so make sure it's wide enough beyond those areas to actually function as a true multi-use.
So not something for this tonight, but the gas out in front, again, we'll have a lot of questions regarding the look and feel and street attractiveness of that. You know, if there was any other place to put it, I'd say put it somewhere else, but I recognize that, you know, you want to get as much on you as you can on the site, and you want to keep the gas next to conceivably the big box, but that's a tough, that's a tough sell on that whole big front view, having a big gas station there, but...
Don't some big boxes have gas?
They do, yeah, remarkably, yeah, they do.
They do, it turns out.
It does, yeah, they turn out to be right next door, so, I get it, but I'm just saying, it's, we'll be pressing on that as far as the view and the street and, you know, we'll want some, you know, some attractive, attractiveness.
Need a Buc-Ee's.
Buc-Ee's. Other questions, concerns, before we open it up for public testimony? Carol?
Several impressions, some of which others have mentioned. It just seems way too much parking, way too much impervious surface, nowhere near enough green space. The trail between, the trail around the pond with a five-story building right up against it just does not appeal to me. If that, plus, I mean, you've already got impervious surface kind of adjacent to the vegetation around the pond. If you could just pull the building back so that you could have a paved trail along of existing pavement, I mean, you're disturbing existing vegetative buffer by putting the trail where the vegetation currently is. So if you can kind of leave that undisturbed, and I understand the desire to have someplace potential access down to a wharf or something, but, I mean, that could go from further up into the development. The other thing that really concerns me is the level of demolition we're talking about here. I mean, New Hampshire has a solid waste issue, and the amount of C and D that's coming out of this project frankly makes me shudder. If there is any way to use some of the existing mall building for the big box rather than tearing everything down and building new stuff up, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable. And I'll leave it there.
Yes.
So just from a process perspective in terms of, I know you guys want to move forward as quickly as you can, I think one of the challenges for staff, so for a comprehensive development plan, it has to comply with the zoning ordinance. And it's been very unclear to us where you intend for public streets to be and where you intend for private streets to be. So thinking back to the Rosseos project, what we did, what they did there is they first applied for their subdivision, and they parceled out their lot. This is where the streets are going to be, these are where the lots are going to be, which made it very easy for us to look at that and evaluate where, whether there was zoning compliance. So first you subdivide out your lot and create those pieces, and then you do a conventional plot plan to show setbacks, and then you, it helps everybody to identify what variances you're actually going to need. Because right now, it's not like a conventional plan that's going to show you, these are where the lot lines are going to be, and these are where the setbacks are. So just basic information, like the location of the buildings, what are the setbacks? Then you can apply for your variances, and you can get your variances, and then you can come back here. Now, that's not even addressing all of the public-private partnership questions that may need to occur. I don't know what those may or may not be, but thinking of the Rosseos, when we went through the process, a lot of that stuff was worked out before they got their approvals. So just thinking in terms of moving it forward as quickly as you can, you need to... as quickly as you can, you need to nail down some of those things. Even in these conversations, it's not, I mean, I appreciate everything the board said about maybe that shouldn't be a road. So I don't know if you take some of this feedback back with you to tweak your plan or make it more solid or, or whatever, but I think that's gonna help you move forward.
And just for the, for those of you that don't have any, the Rossios is, the Rossios are the ones who built the interchange development up at Exit Seventeen. Ari certainly knows it, but if you're not familiar with it, the, the comprehensive development plan and the process was very well-defined and it.
Was nailed down.
It was, really gave us a really good understanding, so when they came in. And so it prompts a question for me of you guys is, um, is the number of units that we're looking at here, are you looking at keeping existing units? So where retail, retail and proposed building up in the Regal Cinema, is that gonna be a, a separate unit? A separate condo, a separate plan, or is it all gonna be one big master plan?
Right, so it, those are different questions.
Yes, they are, sorry.
That's okay. I, I, I'll take them in order. Um, we are, we are essentially doing just what Heather described, which is figuring out which streets are intended to be accepted as public, which streets already are public, where we've got frontage to have standalone lots, whether they're commonly owned or spun off or whatever, but commonly owned is the current theme. That will inform our list of zoning relief, and it will therefore lead to a zoning application and the, and a presentation to the zoning board. When those decisions are made, we'll then be able to come back here and explain, this is where that leaves us, this is where the lot lines are, this is what complies, this is what doesn't comply but has a variance, and we'll be able to put the details on how the layout is shaping up. We don't have that at this moment because frankly, and, and I'm glad we don't, because some of the comments that we've received tonight are gonna reshuffle a lot of those issues. And had, had we come in with that idea.
You'd been going and doing it again.
We, we would just be doing it a, a fourth time. We've already done it three times.
Um, and then phasing, is this gonna be a one-and-done? Is this gonna be phased over different periods as far as residential?
It's one phase done over a continuous span of, you know, commencing in twenty twenty-four and running into twenty twenty-six. And as comments in, uh, from staff, you know, we're gonna have to coordinate to sewage um, capacity and things like that as it relates to the um, activation of the residential.
And entrance-wise, you're gonna be both equally coming in off of Sheep Davis as well as coming in off of Loudon Road?
New Hampshire DOT traffic counts actually show that Sheep Davis is slightly higher than Loudon in terms of daily traffic counts.
Coming in?
Yeah, coming in and going.
Interesting.
By about two thousand cars.
I believe that, I guess. If you're coming from outside or from the other area, that's the way you're coming in.
You know, the problem with, in, just to expand on what Doug was saying about phasing, we're, we're, we're looking at one phase. We're looking at a, obviously, the reality of a lengthy construction period, but one phase. And, and the reason is, we think we can hit the markets we need to fill the project now. When you start to phase a project and you've got, you know, phase one now, phase two, five years, phase three, five years after that, you're, you're, you're taking what's already an educated guess and expanding it out to beyond reliable.
Now, if you can do it, it's great, two-in-one, and, and put it all together and get it all in the ground as quickly as you can. I am a hundred percent behind you on that. Any other questions, Jeff?
One thing I would just say, as you move forward, one of the biggest downfalls, I think, of the mall was traffic-wise. The tenants and the people weren't directed to use three ninety-three.
Yeah.
You know, anything you can do from today all the way till you open the front door, the residents, the retail users, the public, it's Exit Three off three ninety-three to one oh six or whatever, rather than, oh, everybody uses Exit Fourteen, comes all the way up Loudon Road, and we all remember Christmas season sitting at East Side Drive and a half mile long backup. So that, just one thing I would say is start thinking that mantra now as you walk all the way through there is how you, as the developer, can help set that message now would be great comment.
In, in the Seabrook projects, uh, the BJ's and the Hobby Lobby bobs, um, we have very clear signage that direct people to Route One or Ninety-five and what was the best uh, direction for them to head to the site.
You know, what, this, this has, I, I do this for a living. Th- this comes up wherever I go, and the reason it comes up is because of the heavy reliance on GPS software on phones and other things. It gives you the most correct route, but it doesn't give you the smartest route, or the less congested route all the time. There are settings, but they're not reliable. Artificial intelligence, it turns out, isn't that intelligent. And, and so I think that the answer to your question is to be smart about signage and, and give that driver, that visitor, the customer, the, the, the comfort that, yes, you can go a little out of your way and it will be worth your while. You'll get to the road you're looking for and you'll encounter less traffic.
That all comes when you set it up and you say, okay, what's the address of, of this property and this development? So when somebody's looking for this big unnamed bu- box store, they come to the address at Sheep Davis Road, and it, and it points them right there. Cause if it's telling them it's on Sheep Davis Road, it's not gonna direct them to Loudon Road and around. It's gonna come off three ninety-three and down that way. So when it gets set up, that's the way to do it, and, and have all the main, kind of the main entrances on that. That being said, you know, that may change the way the flow works through for you guys to look at everything and say, if seventy percent of the cars are gonna come off Sheep Davis, is that the best way for them to come through the property to get to where they're going, or are they, you know? So again, that's why we're here, to just kinda throw other ideas. One more, two more, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Have you come up with a name yet for this?
No, we're open to suggestions.
Don't offer that to him. That's a, that was a bad idea. David?
Uh, just one comment, and that is that I concur with fellow board members, and just to impress upon you, you've heard several of us talk, or some talk about the green space and the, and, and that's gonna be a big part of my vote in terms of, I mean, that, I think it's the mistake that was made when the mall was built is that it's just a big, huge, impervious. And just as a, a comment, if you fly a light plane and you go over that site right now, you go straight up with the thermal water bubble that comes off of that, that property. It's, it's unbelievable. So, um, green space, I think, is gonna mean a lot to several of us.
Green space and traffic are gonna be some of the big concerns, and I'm sure you'll hear that as well. Okay, let's, uh, let's have you guys step back for a sec, um, take some notes. We may have you come back up. We'll get some public testimony, and then we will, uh, and then we'll come back. All right. I'm sure you're not all here to listen to me talk, so if someone would like to come on up, be the first one, I'll, I'll welcome someone up, ladies, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Pennard. Um, I am one of the four licensed tenants at the Steeplegate Mall currently. We've been there since twenty sixteen. I'm here representing Hat Box Theater, uh, which arrived, uh, out of curiosity. Please raise your hand if you've attended a performance at Hat Box Theater. Excellent. Thank you so much for coming out. Um, we deeply appreciate it. For those of you who have not had the opportunity to attend one, we're a small hundred-seat performing arts venue which has over a hundred and seventy-five performances a year. Since we've begun, we've brought in about twenty productions a year, uh, including comedy, magic. In fact, we just celebrated, uh, ten years, the longest-running show of any sort in the state of New Hampshire that you probably have never heard of, called Discovering Magic, that's been here in Concord since twenty thirteen on a monthly basis. Um, we have had over thirty-five thousand attendees. Our production companies come from all around New Hampshire and beyond. We have people working in our space. Now they're driving down from Lebanon to work, uh, at Hat Box Theater. We have people coming from Maine. We have people coming from, uh, northern Massachusetts. Um, I believe one of our enthusiastic supporters have gotten you guys a season nine program, so you have that in front of you there. We are incredibly excited to see some development at the Steeplegate Mall. When we first moved in, we used to, we used to keep track of the decline of the property by how many, uh, venues moved out, how many shops moved out of the space. And towards the very end, we started keeping track by how many were left. And considering it had between fifty-five and sixty-four spaces for retail space, uh, that's a rather substantial decline. There's no doubt that this space needs to be developed, and, uh, last Friday, I had the great pleasure to, uh, speak with Brian, um, for the first time. We had, uh, an abysmal track record with the previous owners of ever connecting with any of the tenants. In fact, at one point, we hosted tenant meetings that went completely unresponded to because we were trying to get things happening at the mall. Um, and we are grateful for the support that this community has given Hat Box Theater. Since we've opened, it's brought a lot of interest, uh, not only locally, but, uh, regionally and nationally. When we opened, the story was carried across the country about how to redevelop and use these types of spaces. That said, we are extremely excited about this, but you'll notice our name is not one of the names that are on the proposal in front of you. That is not their fault. My understanding is, is that they were unaware that we even existed until they, uh, read about it in the newspaper, because as a licensed tenant, we, they did not, the, the owners did not have to notify them that we even existed. My hope, and I'm, I'm excited in speaking with, uh, some of the representatives from the development team, that there may be an interest in maintaining a presence of having performing arts, because after all, it is the gateway performance district. Uh, and in fact, the one-third of live work is play, and it's, play is what happens in a theater. At any rate, um, we, we are very excited about what might be happening in the space. We recognize that there are likely to be significant challenges, not only to us, but the other licensed tenants who are going to either have to move or close. And there have been plenty of places that have closed. In fact, in Watertown, Massachusetts, uh, they're closing the new Rep Theater, which has forty years of developing new art that has gone on to win Tony Awards. It, it, remarkable thing when you build culture locally, and that's what Hat Box Theater has done for this community. We don't go out and bring national touring acts to the space. We provide a unique experience where people come and they can sit within four rows of the acts that are on stage. It's an incredibly immersive, incredibly, uh, impactful, and an incredibly important experience, not just for the audiences, but also for the artists, some of which are pure amateurs, some of which are semi-professionals, and some of which are professional performers who are coming to Concord to create new work. A lot of what we do is new creative work, original works that, and we've had, I think, over a dozen world premieres in the last six years of shows that have happened at Hat Box and then went to New York. At least one was presented in New York recently. So, um, we're a little fish, very little fish. We seat a hundred people. We have no paid staff. Even though we are a, uh, an LLC, a sole-member LLC, we've operated as a not-for-profit. I have not taken a salary since the beginning nine years ago, uh, and it is done for the love of creating culture and community here in Concord. And I am, my audience for this is not necessarily you, but for those folks who are sitting behind me, who are looking for ways to create value in the property that they are developing. And to some extent, I think that if this community values what Hat Box has been bringing to this community, they will realize that, and they will want to build on the work that we've done. So I am extremely hopeful and cautiously optimistic that we will have a place in this proposal. Um, it is interesting that the timing of it is very quick, and as someone, first off, I meant to open with, thank you for serving on this, and thank you for staff members for the work you do. I was an elected official for sixteen years, served on a planning board for two, uh, as a select board representative, served on the zoning board. I know the amount of hours that goes into this, and now some of the volunteers who happen to perform at Hat Box know some of the hours that go into this. Um, we understand the process.
Every meeting is just like this, you know? Usually, usually WMUR stays a little bit longer. Let me.
I was so disappointed. I almost wanted to come in and talk at the end of the pri- prior proposal, because honestly, um, this applies to all developments. And in fact, I have to applaud the work of several developers in the Northeast who have committed to not just putting static art displays as part of their proposals, but have actually put performing arts venues into those proposals. For example, Chinburg Properties in New Market has a mill space, has a performance space in the mills there, and that was dedicated, and it's being used by the community to do this type of work. So I'm very heartened to see that happening around the Northeast. Um, as someone who, uh, my family is deeply from Concord, even though I live in Bradford, my mother-in-law, we just sold her house up on Pine Street, uh, back in January. She had lived there since nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, my, my wife went to school at Concord High School, graduated from there. She was on the student council when Krista McAuliffe went up into space, and she was on all of those television programs and has repeatedly declined them since, because some of the things that we are proud to be associated with also are the most traumatic. But coming back to this proposal, it's, I think it's a good one. It's happening quick, and it's happening quick for us. You know, we know we're going to have to be out at some time in the spring, possibly the sum, as late as the summer. It depends on how quickly you move on this, but I noted tonight that the plans, uh, that were displayed on the screens today showed radical alterations of buildings being flipped from one direction to another, and that's all part of this process. It's a normal process. So I'm excited to see them respond to the feedback that they're getting, and I'm hopeful that they will continue to respond. Um, as to traffic, I am one of the few people because I live, not only have lived in Concord, but have also worked in Concord. I counted every traffic light from one oh six up to Center Street, up to the diocese, up near the library. There are twenty traffic lights. There are more traffic light density in the city of Concord than almost any other city in the Northeast, uh, and it sometimes can take forty-five minutes to get from one oh six to downtown Concord, even though it's only three miles away. So I understand and respect the traffic issues, so. And I live in a town of sixteen hundred, so when I see the developments just tonight of potentially fifteen hundred apartments, you know, and, and a city of forty-four thousand people, which I believe is close to the latest numbers here in Concord, that's a ten percent growth rate in, of potential people in those two developments alone. I do not argue against the housing. It's needed. And I'm excited and grateful to have folks like these developers who are local, who are reaching out and actually having communication with the tenants, and I am excited at the potential to move forward and potentially continue a home in Concord. We have actually been, uh, some places have tried to recruit us to go to Manchester. Some people have tried to recruit us to other communities. I only mention that not as a threat, because frankly, threats never work for planning boards.
That's right.
So, um, at any rate, I am concerned about the speed of the process, so I, I'm looking forward to working with those groups. And at the risk of, uh, avoiding, well, to avoid making these wonderful volunteers who've come out to help support. They may wish to speak, but I would ask that anyone who came to support Hat Box's, uh, continuation either in a, a venue in that location or staying in Concord, would you just stand so that people can see how many people came out and sat through three and a half hours for the opportunity to share their support, so. That's all I've got. Thank you so much for your time and service.
Thank you for your testimony. So let me ask you a couple of questions. Um, so all of the tens of thousands of people that are watching this at home at old ten forty-four at night.
Yes.
So you own a build, if, if you can't come to a, uh, if you can't come to a, uh, an agreement, or if you, if you find yourself looking for a home, um, what's your ideal home look like in the Concord area? If someone is looking and saying, I've got space, how much space do you need and what amenities do you need?
We need approximately seventy-five hundred square feet of space. Interestingly enough, there are two buildings, I think, that are on this plan that are of that size. Um, as, as has been noted, uh, Hat Box Theater has the distinction of possibly being the theater with the largest parking lot in the entire New England region. Um, but we do, one of the things that appeals to a lot of the people who come to Hat Box is the ability to drive and park close to the venue. Um, we can't afford, because we are a small arts organization with, um, a certain amount of revenue that we can affordably generate, um, and to keep tickets priced at a level where everybody can afford to go and see them, we have to be in a space that we can afford to, uh, pay for. Right now, uh, in January of last year, we paid four times what we pay for rent in electrical alone, just for that.
I mean, you don't need anything more than heat and electricity and.
Accessibility.
Accessibility and a decent amount of parking. Uh, you don't have to tell me, but, uh, again, for the thousands of people that are watching, how would they get ahold of you if they had a space?
Well, HatBoxNH.com actually is a great way to get hold of us and find out about all the shows, including Lizzie's rock opera about Lizzie Borden coming up on this.
You gotta realize how unusual my questions are, because I never, I never do this, but I, I did wanna give you an opportunity to at least.
I appreciate that. And you can also reach me at Andrew@HatBoxNH.com. That's an email address as well.
With that, any questions? With that, any questions for Mr. Pernard? Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for everybody for coming out and supporting the project or supporting the theater. Other questions, comments, concerns from the public? Come on up.
Hat Box just went, fan of Hat Box is following.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not part of any of the people who do the shows, I just go to them. And it's been kind of cool to see the people I've seen on stage and the audience, and some we lost at the break.
Do you mind just sharing your name real quick?
Oh, sorry, Lawrence Stubble. I, I'm from New Hampshire, born, raised, went to the state as a theater major, and then left the state, as did all the other theater majors, because there's no theater in New Hampshire. The Capitol, the Palace, the new place they opened up in Nashua, it's all touring acts. There's no place for us to go when we graduate. So we leave the state. Hat Box is, is, is an amazing find, A, because we can afford it, you know, I went to see Coach Rep a couple of weekends ago, and that's $60 a ticket. And the fact that they have all these different groups coming in, it's not just one artistic director, it's all these different groups coming in, it's dynamic, different visions, entirely different ideas of what theater should look like, what theater should be. Concord has that. You know, I, I, I guess I'm biased, because I was a theater major, I, I hear that, the excitement at Costco when Walmart's two lights down. And I go, "But, but you guys have something unique." I, I see the list of, of, of businesses that they're looking to bring in, and they're the same ones I've seen in every city in, in the country. You guys have something unique, we have something unique. The, the people that, that, that have the passion of coming and doing theater at Hat Box, they do it because they love it, no one's making, making money, or not a lot. You heard him, he's not taking a paycheck. They do it because they want it, and they're, they're residents, they're here, and there's nowhere else for them to go. And now it's going to get destroyed. I'm not saying against development, absolutely not against development. But you're going to lose something that makes you guys unique, makes us unique.
Well, it's not the building, I mean, you, you-
No, no, I meant, I mean Hat Box.
You just need to find, you know, the, the, nobody's questioning whether it's a great facility or a great, a great venue, it could be anywhere, you know, any 7,000 square foot building will do.
Right. But there isn't, I mean, they didn't-
There aren't a lot of them, and, and, you know, that's the problem.
That, yeah, well, okay, if you guys have one to give them, great. And I don't know that this is where I'm supposed to even say this, but where else would it be?
I don't know.
Right? Because, because this is just go forward, and then Hat Box will be gone, and no, and I wouldn't get to say this anywhere.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Other questions, concerns, comments? Yes, sir.
I'll keep it very brief. Steve Henninger. First off, I agree with Carol, you shouldn't really touch that swamp to the east of the-
It's a pond.
Not a pond.
It's a, it's a shimmering, sunshiny pond.
It's a swamp. The only time there's really open water is when the beavers block the outfall, under Sheep Davis Road.
Yep.
Okay, it's a, the, it's used for stormwater treatment from the huge amount of impervious surface that comes off the wall. The second thing is I also, I'm very happy that you've focused on the dropping of all those residential units in the middle of a parking lot. There's no integration of the residential units, they're just sort of dropped into a middle of a large parking lot with driveways going through them, and they, there's nothing wrong with putting that number of units in on that site, I don't think at all, I think it'd be a disaster. But they're not, it's not a residential project. They've just dropped a bunch of residential buildings, not integrated into the commercial on the site, and I think it needs to be reorganized and rethought. It can be done, there shouldn't be any problems. Traffic, the third thing is traffic. I don't think traffic is going to be as big an issue as some people think. You're losing over 200,000 square foot of retail and substituting the residential units. You're going to have a completely different traffic pattern. You're actually going, you have a non-existent AM peak from that project, you're going to get an AM peak. Like, when I come out of my neighborhood in the morning, Loudon Road is a desert. You're going to have traffic that now in the morning. Saturday is the peak, when it was operating as a retail. You're not going to have, those residential units are not going to generate that much traffic, Saturday peak hour. They're going to generate some, but not like a mall was, mall did when it was its heyday. So, it's going to be a different traffic distribution. So, it's going to be completely different. And I, I agree, today, you don't get five trips, five parking spaces per 1,000 square feet is not needed for retail. You definitely don't need that for the, for a lot of, for the proposed retail uses. I don't know what they're using, I, I, that, it's very hard to read that project report. I don't know what they're doing for parking generation, but I bet you can use a lot less parking, and you might be able to use a conditional use permit to show the parking and, and as green space, and maybe even use it for overflow, overflow parking for the two, two weeks a year that you need for that Christmas peak. So there's a lot of things they possibly can do, because, you know, it's, retailers, if somebody shows up on December 23rd and they can't find a parking space, that's lost profit. So that's the only thing they can, they're concerned with. If it sits empty for the, every other day of the year, it doesn't matter to them. But it does matter to us, and it does matter for, for drainage, for environment, for the heat outlet. So a lot of that parking could be grass parking and just used for peak parking, so there's a lot of different ways they could approach this to get more green space. And I agree fully that, I was looking for the parking, it looks like some of those units have to park in front of, of the retail space. And I walked through that to get to their unit. So I, I just, it just doesn't look like wonderful retail environment.
Okay.
And I think, I think you've made some very good points, but I want to say that I think this, I think they could do this project, and I think they could put the number of units in there, and I can think they could address everything you want to do. And if they don't have to pave a lot of that area, they can save some money.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your testimony. Questions from Mr. Henninger? Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Tyler Puckett, I'm a resident of Ward Nine, just across from Stiefel Gate, so this is literally my backyard. Just wanted to briefly reiterate the sentiment around Hat Box, I'm a big fan of Hat Box, and I, I truly think they're a diamond in the rough, and really a cultural asset, the heights. So, I was so concerned that just they're not accounted for in this first draft, and so, particularly for the developers in the room, just to, please don't forget about Hat Box. Particularly, I think if the intent here is to create a progressive, modern, mixed-use development, I mean, I can't think of a better place for, for Hat Box to live. So separate from that, I noticed there was also space carved out for a proposed gas station, which was surprising to me, because I can think of at least five gas stations along Loudon Road that exist today. And so I don't know, perhaps the, that's warranted with the increased demand around residential and the big box stores, but frankly, I'd be more excited to see EV charging infrastructure or things of that nature. And then lastly, just again on, on traffic, I don't know if you've ever tried going to Target on a Saturday morning, but Demonte Drive does have a tendency to get quite congested, and so encouraging folks to use 393 would, would be greatly appreciated. So yeah, I think, on the whole, I'm largely inclined to support this project, I think it's much-needed housing, I'm very excited for that, but I appreciate the consideration for those concerns.
Thank you for your testimony. I saw somebody else get up, yep. Okay, welcome back. If you could state your name again for the record?
Hello, Aaron Frack Monroe, again. Very glad that this area is being redeveloped, and we're looking at infill development in, in this area. Kudos to that. Again, previous projects, the planning board has, has asked the developer to develop maybe in the spirit of the forum-based code, so what might that look like here? Would, would we be able to maybe pull some of those buildings closer, the residential buildings closer to the street, and then have the box stores out on Sheep Davis where they have that maybe better traffic patterns? Commenting, yeah, just reiterating what the board said, more green space is, is desperately needed, less parking desperately needed for this project. And going back to that pond, is it a pond, a retention implement for, for stormwater, a marsh? The attractiveness of that water is dubious, maybe? Are people going to be, go down that? And I think that's city property, from what I looked like, it looked like. Could the city clean that up? If there is a, a park with a ball field and whatnot put in there, could that become another park on that side of the town with maybe a, a nice water feature? Pass that, again, just what other board members have said, more bike lanes, more interconnectiveness, bike storage as well. I don't think we mentioned that, and, and some EV charging. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your testimony.
Yep.
All right, anybody else? Yep.
Hi, guys.
Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
Colton Piper, and I just want to say first that I am extremely happy that this is finally getting done. Yeah, I grew up in Tilton, right up north, and I have a lot of memories, me and my friends, I pretty much, we're probably the last generation to see the mall at its height. And, you know, it's sad to see it go, but it's even sadder to see it in the state it is currently in, so just wanted to say I'm really happy about that. And the fact that it's getting used to put in new apartment housing. I just moved from Dover back here in August, and applying for apartments is like applying for, like, applying to an Ivy League college, because there's way little and not a lot of people applying. So, that's great. Last things I want to say, I hope you don't, I hope the green space issue doesn't affect it too mu, your decisions too much, because a lot of people are at my age and younger, and looking around, I'm, might be the youngest person in the room. We just want a place to, to live and not have to live in our parents' house until we're 27 years old, and currently, that's kind of the situation a lot of people are in.
Bet they agree.
Yeah.
We don't want you there either.
It's true, so, you know, more apartments, the, the better, but that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much for your testimony. All right, oops, yep, come on up. We're going to close it up here pretty quick, so if anybody else, almost, we're at 11 o'clock, so.
I'm Stacy Dubia. I just want to agree about the parking for the residential. I would hate to have to walk that huge distance. And then I have a quick, quick question about the building that says R2 that happens to basically be against the existing mall.
Yep.
As it looks, it doesn't look like it has any windows on the back side, I'm just wondering-
Yeah, those are all architectural details that'll come out in the plan, these are just more boxes, just for reference, and-
Okay.
-three-story, four-story, five-story, whatever they might be, they're just-
That's what I was worried, I was just like, if it's going to be about, it's going to be, it's-
We wouldn't let them do that.
Yes, okay, I just, that's the other thing.
That's it.
I just wanted to make a point, thank you.
Great, thank you, thanks very much for your testimony. Okay, we're good, oops, yep, one more. This is it, okay? Last, last comment.
Well, that's good, because my last name starts with a Z, so that works out well. My name is Lester Zions, I'm a member of the Board of Directors at Hat Box, I've just recently gotten involved with your, with them. I would invite Onyx to really think outside of the box, in terms of how you could bring Hat Box into your plans. The other thing that I'd like to say is, is that I would ask the developers to put yourself in the position of the residents that are going to live there. Look out your window, is that what you're going to want to see? You know, a 50,000 square foot rooftop, I, you know, again, like, as some of the others had said, I think maybe that should need some rethinking a little bit. But I, I, again, I hope that Onyx will make room for Hat Box. I think we can be an exciting addition to your development, and please work with us.
Great. Thank you very much for your testimony. All right, so we'll, we'll let it stop there for the public testimony. Again, this is first of what's going to be a group of, of conversations regarding this. You guys want to pop back up just for, no, you all set? You don't have to, if you don't want to, but I just-
I do have one question.
Yeah, okay, so come on up, if you can, just for, just to you guys is fine, or just, just Ari, let, let Ari do it, let Ari do it, he can take the notes.
He can answer my question.
So, from a, you know, you, you heard all the testimony, you heard all the information, take it, do with it what you want. There was a couple of things that popped up regarding, regarding flow, regarding, you know, the buildings, the, the, you know, pedestrian walkways between the buildings and things like that, so take it for what you want, Matt.
Yeah, I'm just curious, and I don't know, Ari, if you can answer this, about how much the existing leases are constraining your design and the site.
Yeah, it's a big issue. You know, you can't relocate existing businesses without closing them, they have terms of lease that entitle them to possession, and we're working around to the best of our ability. And it, it's the same with, a lot of tonight's discussion would apply more if it was a, a greenfield site. What would we love to see if we were starting from, 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 from nothing, from unimproved conditions? But we have an existing condition, and we're doing our best to work around those constraints at the same time as getting creative. So, the feedback is appreciated, but on some of those issues, we're going to come back and say, there wasn't a lot we could do, because we are constrained by what's there.
That's why I asked the question.
Yep.
And I appreciate that.
Okay, other questions for Ari, any other comments or concerns? Anything you want to add?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and again, we will invite people back again for another bite at the apple here with some additional plans as we move forward. So we'll close the public hearing, there's no process that we need to do. You guys don't want to stay around for the next 10 or 12 items on our agenda? Come on!
Swear to watch.
Okay, thank you for at least saying that. Okay, so that brings us to other business, and again, we've got item 8A on our agenda, which has been postponed, yes?
I suggest you just make a blanket motion to postpone items 8A to 8D to the November 15th meeting.
Okay, so 8A to 8D, would I have a motion to postpone those to the November 15th meeting?
So move.
Motion's been made. How about a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. So, item, item 8E on our agenda, we've got F. Webster Stout on behalf of Wayne and Roberta Hall, we're going to, the applicant request to postpone to no date certain. So could we have a motion to postpone that application to no date certain? Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that brings us to the end of our agenda, any other items to come before the board tonight? Yes?
So I did email all of you that letter, which I would suggest we fold over to the next, maybe if you want to discuss it, well, I'll put it, I'll actually put it on the agenda next month.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep, please, let's, maybe even write up-
She sent it just today, excuse me?
The cinema, that letter?
It was the letter about her, her concern about alternative modes of transportation in residential areas. It was one of the-
Yep.
It was one of the, it was one of the things that I sent you this afternoon. So we'll put that on next month.
Bring that up for next month. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you everyone.